Oh, good. Bill's here. Then I think we'll go ahead and get started. We have a lot on the agenda this evening. Good evening. This is a meeting of the Cunningham Township Board. It's Monday, October 12th, 2020. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Brown.
Here.
Colbrook.
Here.
Bow. Miller. Roberts.
Here.
Whoa.
Here.
Marlin.
Here. Next up is minutes of the previous meeting. It's from August 24th, September 14th, and September 28th. Is there a motion for approval?
I'm of approval.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Bill Colbrook. Are there any corrections? Okay. Councilmember Jared Miller has joined the meeting. If there are no corrections, will the clerk please call the roll?
Members Brown.
Yes.
Colbrook.
Yes.
Blair.
Could you repeat that, Wendy?
Councilmembers Brown. Colbrook. Miller. Miller.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes.
That motion passes. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay, seeing none. Next up is public participation. Does anyone wish to address the Cunningham Town Board? I see no hands raised. Okay, we'll move on to committee to verify bills.
Good evening. This last month in the town fund, we had forty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-nine cents in expenditures. In the general assistance fund, we had seventy-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirty-nine cents in expenditures. And that total comes to one hundred and nineteen thousand, nine hundred and eighteen and ninety-eight cents in expenditures. You'll see in the rolls that our participants are slightly down. We were at one hundred and thirty-four, down from one forty-seven. We closed twenty-four participants cases and we opened eleven. And I drilled in a little bit just because of the number of closures and I've given some detailed breakdown. We had thirteen of that, of the twenty-four that were closed were either because they're out of township or they were transferred successfully to other cash benefits. We had three who were closed due to increased income and employment, which is good. There were seven closed of doing, being non-responsive and then we had a moment of silence for our participant who passed away. Fifty-eight of our one hundred and thirty-four are homeless, down from sixty-seven last month. The average age went down slightly and this month will remain, we remained closed in September and we're working with Salt and Light to open in a modified way in November. So, working towards November, December, opening for a community work program. We did see an increase in rental assistance. We had really had a very low number of people applying. Although you'll see under additional assistance, we've been moving a lot of people into housing who are general assistance participants or receive subsidized housing. And so we're using angel donor funds for those moves. So we've done a lot of, quite a bit of housing work, but the, our formal rental assistance program, which requires sufficient income, which is the problem during the pandemic, we only saw four last month. I did just also wanted to highlight that we've seen a increase in requests and I'm trying to start tracking calls into the office. So we just did, I did a calculation. We had one thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine calls come in in September. That's sixty-eight calls in per workday. And it comes to about one every six minutes, which is pretty, pretty much along the lines of what we are experiencing in the township office. We also have been tracking applications since March when COVID hit. We started to put at paper applications outside the door and then we also have had online applications. And so we're at about six hundred applications for general assistance and five hundred and fifty approximately for rental assistance during that time. So about a hundred ninety to a hundred applications each per month that are going out the door. Happy to answer any questions you have about the town bills.
Mary Alice.
So I noticed that there were, under the angel donor expenses, there is some items, some small dollar numbers for rental houses. And is that for an application fee?
Correct. Yes. And actually, I will say that I'm, I'm meeting with all the landlords and requesting that they waive application fees for township participants. That is optional. And I have a number of landlords who've actually agreed to not charge fees for our participants. But in these cases, they did charge fees and we paid typically, that's for general assistance participants who are moving into subsidized housing. We're working very closely with Housing Authority and we're moving quite a few people, as you can see in the report, into housing. But anything like an application fee, if they don't have that cash on hand, we will pay that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Danielle? Is there, is there a motion to, oh, Jared?
I was just gonna make a motion to approve the town fund and the general assistance fund.
Okay.
And I will second it.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Bill Colbrook. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Brown.
Yes.
Colbrook.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes.
That motion passes. Next up is reports of officers.
Yes, just to continue on the topics I raised in my supervisor memo. And I forgot to mention, we only have three months of phone data. I really wished our phone company had a year so I could compare. But I did look to July's numbers compared to September's numbers and we are up a hundred calls. So we'll, I'm gonna now download that data each month and start including it in the information, just so that we can, can keep track of that. I have with Cure Funding, I've been able to bring on some additional staff support. We've just been unable to keep up with the phone calls without, you know, a certain amount of hardship. And so I'm now cross-training and thanks to the Cure Funding, able to bring on two other folks who can help to support the phone calls. We do have calls being answered. There's three people who can answer the call at any time and sometimes there's three people on the phone. So housing advocacy is going well. We've had, we've now helped since we started this program. It was close to the beginning of the fiscal year. We've helped forty-eight people apply for housing. There are seven housing opportunities we've been able to help them apply for. We have ten who have moved in and we have a number in progress. So really excited about seeing that number go up. These are almost all homeless residents who are moving into permanent housing. We are doing significant disability advocacy and I have a train store advocate and she has reported, she's, she's now working with two people actually who are applying for SSI. And then we were able to get two reimbursements last month. And I don't know if, in our, I can do a quarterly financial report for you next month. But basically, we had expected twenty-five thousand dollars in SSI reimbursements this year and we're a little over twenty thousand in the first quarter. So we're doing great with that SSI recoupment and that actually, if we can continue that, will pay for that store advocate position. I really like to see, because we, we only really have one case manager in town fully helping people apply for disability. And there are no attorneys in town who will help people with their initial application. So we're really working with the mental health board to see if we can get several other nonprofits funded for disability advocacy. And then we ourselves would like to add a person in a more permanent way through those social security reimbursements. So very excited about that piece. The Buckit Brigade continues to go strong. We've now served over fifteen hundred people, including five hundred and seventy-nine children. That's a total of six hundred and thirty-eight buckets. The bucket, the actual buckets are now being funded through the grants process, the social service grants process. And then I just wanted to point out, and you'll see this coming to your home next week hopefully, is our volunteer designer, Cope Comston, has designed a postcard mailing about resources during the time of COVID. And I included a copy of that postcard. We thought it would be helpful to just do a direct mail to every household in Urbana. I also sent today a rental assistance letter to every landlord and that's going to be included in the city's mailing to landlords. So I've been working with Lori Pearson on that and we'll have include that lists all the resources, the county resources, city of Champaign Township, our resources as well. It's a number of other resources since we've seen an increase in calls, especially around domestic violence. So I have other kind of call for help numbers in that document and it's set up so that landlord can simply copy the backside of my letter and distribute it to his or her tenants. So I'm excited that we were able to do some of that work with the Cure Funding. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Bill Brown.
Yeah, thanks Danielle. On the rental assistance, do we, have we looked at how successful that is as far as like, people to get rental assistance, contact them a year later, it's been in place for a while now? And see if they're still in the same apartment or see if they're in a different apartment or if they've had to move in with somebody else? You know, if it's actually worked long-term?
Yeah.
Have we tried anything like that yet?
Yes, so we, from the beginning of the program, one of the secondary reasons that we've done the Township Garden events and the other kind of like back to school and outreach events. And more recently, the call-throughs are lists for housing assistance and also the call-through for the Stimulus Act funding is that each time we call, one of the questions we ask is what the status of their housing is. And we'll say, are you still at the address? And we'll list the address that we actually helped them move into or stay in, so that we're checking on that address. I wouldn't say it's at three, six, nine, and twelve months. It's typically, it's actually usually more frequently than that. We've been calling through our list almost every month. The issue is that we don't always get through to folks. So I would say we eventually get through to them in that six-month period. I have been challenged in figuring out how to track data that is so spotty. So I, I don't have a good data tracking. We, we do keep the housing status in our case management, but, but tracking points in time, over time, I don't have a good system. What I do know is that RPC, a partner in rental assistance, has the exact same criteria and the same process, does do that for their state grant and we meet quarterly and they're reporting, this is pre-COVID, but they were reporting success rates, success rates around eighty-nine to ninety-three percent. So I think the larger issue for us is that once we have helped people with rental assistance, we don't see, their rent burden doesn't necessarily go away. And so what we're trying to do is follow up anytime there's a subsidized housing opportunity, say for families with children, then we'll call through everyone we know who we've worked with who has children and basically help them navigate that process of applying. There's also a number of non-Housing Authority options and so we will call through and help them apply. And then we are actively working with the statewide referral network as well to list people on the statewide referral network to move into, say Aspen Corr has SRN units, as does a number of the Housing Authority properties and then some of the, the private properties. So that's the data that I have currently, but for our particular program, I really would like to have more systematic data. I just haven't found an easy way of tracking that.
Okay, thanks. I think that eighty-nine percent that the county is, or RPC was it, who's, who's got that? Yeah. I think that's a good target, but I think we do need to keep looking at how we can get that data, especially with the letters going out to landlords and stuff. If the programs could be expanded greatly, I think it'll be really important to prove that it has a long-term impact or at least a medium-term impact that, you know, it's not just a one and done thing.
Yeah. And Sheri's brought up, she's not here tonight, but she has brought up concerns about allowing people to access it only, access it only once every two years. By state law, we could actually allow people to access it once a year. I'd like to probably do some data collection around that before going in that direction. But, and I, and I am looking into the possibility of using additional Cure Funding, if we're able to bring that in to support more COVID rental relief, especially the city right now has a COVID rental relief program. And as those funds are exhausted, we'd like to, to fill in those gaps. So hopefully I'll have some information about that in future months.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Danielle? Okay. Wayne, did you have a report?
Just that we got, we have approximately two hundred and fifty-eight assessment complaints that we are working through. We are also near completing the project that I started to reclassify all of our various commercial properties. This will help us to have more, more detailed and targeted assessments when it's time to reassess property. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Wayne? Okay. We'll move on to unfinished business. Don't think there is any new business. First up is Resolution Number T 2020-10-019R, which is a resolution authorizing Cunningham Township Assessor to sign a contract with Pictometry International Corporation for Orthogonal and Oblique Imaging. Wayne?
So I emailed you all the contract earlier today. It does need some changes that I specified in the email. That said, the vendor has agreed to those changes. I didn't, we just don't have the, the final document yet, but they have agreed to those changes. And what this is, is this is actually gonna be a higher resolution flight than we did earlier this year. This will be paid for with the local Curex funding that I applied for and the guys approved a couple of weeks ago. What this does is this will allow for a much greater detail, three times the resolution of the imagery we already have. And the difference is the resolution is gonna be less, less than one inch per pixel. So for every pixel that we're off on a measurement, it will be less than one inch of actual difference, which is three times better than a three-inch per pixel that we already have.
Questions for Wayne? Bill?
So what is it you can see with the one-inch resolution aerial photos that you can't see with the three-inch resolution photos that you need in order to determine assessments?
So with the three-inch resolution, and normally, you know, had it not been an outside source paying for this, I would have never asked for the sub-one-inch resolution. With the three-inch resolution, you know, it's more than half the cost. So the flight before is about eighteen thousand, this is forty thousand. But to answer your question, the three-inch resolution is not accurate enough to replace in-person field inspections. The sub-one-inch resolution is accurate enough to replace in-person inspections, which is the reason why I applied for this grant, to pay for this.
Okay, and then with the in-person inspections, I think it's hard for some of us to imagine exactly what's involved. How are you interacting with the public with those? Some of us just think you're going out and measuring.
I'm sorry. Well, for every, for, for example, for a residence, you know, we knock on the door, right? And if someone is home, there's an interaction. We obviously would talk with whoever is home and ask for permission. Sometimes if we're on a construction site, there's still people there working on the site. So there, there may be incidental contact, which normally isn't a big deal, but when there's a global pandemic of a highly contagious disease out there, it's a very big deal. And then also my chief deputy, William Harris, go ahead.
You need to knock on the door to get permission to go in the backyard or something like that? I mean?
I mean, we don't have to knock on the door, but we do as a courtesy.
Okay. I mean, you can't just, you can't do what you need to do from looking from the sidewalk. You have to go on the private property, is that right?
I mean, it would be pretty difficult to measure a backyard from the sidewalk, Bill.
So the answer is yes?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I think that's all my questions for now. Thanks.
Any other questions? Mary Alice?
Wayne, you said that you had specifically applied for a grant to pay for this. Does that mean that the, the grant is not coming from a larger grant for township? I mean, Danielle had just referenced using some of the CARES Fund for further rental assistance. Is it, are they not intermingled?
It's, the Curex funding is one, one pot of funding available to government agencies to recoup the costs of doing business during COVID. And actually, I, this has not been marketed very carefully to township, so I was unaware of the funding. Wayne brought it to my attention initially when he was looking for ways to cover the, the pictometry because of the COVID concerns. And so he raised that with me and at the time, when I looked at it, I said, you know, there may be other things that we could, or Wayne suggested there would be other things that we could cover at that time. So he submitted the grant on the behalf of township as a whole and we asked for additional funding because of other needs. So yes, it's one pot of money and this was one piece. And this was the concern that led us to find the, the grant and pursue it.
So Danielle, just to summarize real quickly, if I'm hearing you correctly, that there is, there is one pot of money that then is used for government entities to offset the expense of COVID and is that, is that correct? So what are we, what have we been using the other funds for? From the same brand?
Oh, so I have, so we haven't submitted any reimbursements yet. We just got access to the portal after you all confirmed that we could receive the grant two weeks ago. We have been in contact with DCO because we want to make sure any future expenditures are going to be, that we expect to be covered, will be covered. So for example, the, the mailer that I'm doing was an unexpected expense and I want to make sure that it's covered under Curex. So Wayne can speak to his conversation with DCO, but with the pictometry as well as future expenditures, we're checking with them before making that expenditure. So in our case, we're looking at lobby, some lobby safety reconfigurations, a different video doorbell, a buzzer that allows people in and out, because frankly, if you have two people in our lobby, you're, you're exposing one of them to COVID. That's our, that's the big concern with our lobby. It's, it's like the city's lobby, except that's all we have, you know, it's very small space. So we're reconfiguring those pieces, doing this mailer. And then I am looking into seeing if we can do some direct assistance. It appears that we can for, for COVID rental assistance. What I do know and what I've been told from DCO is that it's, we, we were approved for two hundred and four and some pennies, two hundred and four thousand. But if we spend it, we actually can request more. So Wayne and I have already notified them that we have an additional sixty thousand dollars we're expecting. And we're, we're, you know, hoping to basically move those reimbursements into the portal as quickly as possible, move through the expenses and, and, and request additional dollars. Because right now, for government, it's been difficult for government to use the dollars that are available. So there's quite a bit available, is my understanding.
All right. And then Wayne, just to expand on some of Bill's question. So this means that you will no longer be going out in the field, is that correct?
No, that's not correct. For now, that, that is what we're gonna do, but I don't expect this to be an ongoing thing. An in-person property inspection, that's a key aspect of the assessor's duties. That said, right now, it's, it's dangerous to do in-person property inspection. Hopefully, if we get past this virus, we can get back to doing in-person property inspection. Typically, like if you're gonna get these type of fights, these oblique fights, you wanna get them every other or every three years. The more often you get it, the more, the better. But that said, like, you know, forty thousand dollars every two years, it's not an expense that the township alone could, could take, right? Which is, you know, even the eighteen thousand for the three-inch resolution, that's a big expense for the township.
Let me, let me rephrase my question. If we go ahead and approve this contract, does that mean that nobody will need, be, need to be in the field for the next two years?
Well, certainly for the next, for the next year. And there are some exceptions, like for example, you know, these, these are, these images are taken from the skies. There could be like a bad angle, right? And we might need to, you know, because of a bad angle, we might still need to go out, but this will certainly reduce that substantially.
Okay. Do you think it would not, it would not stop the going out in person? But for the vast majority of the, of the locations, you will not be going out in person for the next two years. Is that correct?
For the, I, I don't wanna say two years, certainly for the next year.
Well, I mean, if, if it's good for two years, it would make sense to be able to use, leverage that tool for the next two years, right?
Well, well, no. So they, hopefully, you know, the flight would happen in November, right? There'll be additional construction between November and another flight. So then obviously, we'd have to go out to get whatever.
For new construction, sure, sure. But you wouldn't have to go out.
No.
Instruction.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Bill? Oh, sorry Dennis, I didn't see you.
Ed, Bill, if you wanna do it.
Okay. Just a couple of follow-ups. So for new construction, you get the permitting information from the city, right? Oh, what size the buildings are and how many bedrooms and bathrooms and things like that?
Not necessarily. You know, there are things like change orders that happen and not everything is always accurately recorded on a permit. We don't have, we don't know necessarily the construction material. You certainly cannot judge the quality of a building by looking at a permit. Being able to put eyes on a building is very important in what we do.
Okay, and I don't, you did say that the one-inch resolution photos would eliminate the need for somebody to go versus the three inches. You say somebody's just to go out there, but it's still, you haven't really said, what is it? The, the one-inch shows that you need to see, that the three-inch doesn't show. They're both, they're both oblique. I haven't ever seen three-inch imagery, actually. I know you guys said we'd have logins and I asked about it a couple of months ago, but I guess it wasn't set up yet. But I'm real familiar with six-inch resolution and it seems like you could almost do a lot of measurements with that. So is there anything you can tell me about one inch that makes it necessary?
So, so one inch is just, is a more precise image that you're getting, right? And just to give you, and it allows for not only more precise, but more consistent measurements. So there's less error depending on who's doing the measurement on the screen. Remember, like it's one inch per pixel, right? So a pixel is like a very tiny, you know, thing. Like the fly that landed on Mike Pence's head was several pixels, right? And on your television screen and on a computer monitor, even, even more pixels. So for every pixel you're off, while you're doing this measurement on your computer, you're either gonna be three inches with a three-inch resolution, six inches with a six-inch resolution off, and that adds up, the bigger the structure is.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Dennis?
Yeah, Wayne, this is, I recall that we had a conversation earlier about three-dimensional photography being used as flyovers. Did we invest in that? I can't remember. I thought we did. Or am I wrong?
So what, what this, what this is, is it'll be oblique photography from the air, right? So you'll get an angled shot from almost all directions. And the reason I say almost is because it's, it's really dependent upon the flight plan. So there are some buildings where you only, you're only gonna get three as opposed to four sides. And that's just, you know, there's only, you know, just, it depends on the flight plan, it depends on the weather conditions, it, it, there are a lot of factors. And then I, I believe what you were talking about was taking those images and turning it into 3D models. That kinda goes beyond what we do in the assessor's office. But that's certainly a possibility.
Oh, I thought we were investing in, in software that allowed that to happen, maybe.
Software that, that will allow you to view, but to actually make it, like, because I remember you were talking about three- like, cause I remember you were talking about 3D printers and stuff like that. That's beyond what we would use it for.
Okay, all right. I guess I'm not sure what, what my answer is on that one, but okay.
Any other questions for Wayne? Is there a motion? Jared?
I will move resolution number T dash 2020 dash 10 dash 019 R be approved.
Was it seconded by Dennis?
Yeah.
And you'll need to add to your motion the corrections that Wayne indicated, which would be on page three under the bill two and ship two should say Cunningham Township, Urbana, Champaign County, Illinois. And then at the bottom of each page, pages three through 14, it should also read Cunningham Township, Urbana, Champaign County, Illinois.
Motion should include that language.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Also, members Brown?
No.
Albrook?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Yes.
We have four yeses and one no. That motion passes. Next up is resolution number T 20 dash 10 dash 02R. Resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign an agreement with NJS Enterprises for case management software.
We have five copies of visual GA. We have added staff members under COVID, but, and even before, I asked them to loan me an additional copy to see if I needed it. And they did that for no expense for a month. We definitely needed it. I then bargained them down from 3,000 to 2,500. And they've agreed to that price, and I'm asking for an additional license. Otherwise, staff members have to jump out of the software to let others in, and it's very cumbersome, given the volume.
Any questions? Mary Alice?
Is this a reoccurring license or is this a one-off? Is this perpetual license or annual?
Yeah, so you pay for the initial fee, and then you pay 20%. And you just approved last month, actually, the 20% for the other five licenses. We won't pay that 20% until the, after the first year. And I am, you know, frankly, this piece, this software, without getting into the weeds, is very expensive at the number of, I find it to be expensive at the number of licenses that we have. Most townships are much smaller than ours, and they only have a few licenses. And I'm just, I'm actually one of the CURE Act funding items that I put on the table is doing a technology assessment, because we are now doing a lot of work digitally and remotely, and I need to look at every piece. So I think that, you know, it may be the case that a custom case management software.
Hold on.
It might be that a case, custom case management software might be more cost-effective going forward, but I'm, I'm not gonna be building that in the middle of a pandemic. But maybe in a year, we'll take a look at that piece.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll do that. I move that, that we accept resolution T 2020 dash 10 dash 020R, a resolution authorizing supervisor to sign an agreement with NJS Enterprises for case management software.
I'll second.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Jared. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
Albrook?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Yes.
That motion passes. Last item on the agenda is resolution number T 20 dash 09 dash 012R, which is a resolution setting compensation of Cunningham Township officials for the four-year term beginning, that should be May 17th, 2021, I believe. Cunningham Township Supervisor, Town Clerk, and Town Board. And beginning January 1st, 2022, for the Township Assessor.
So I wanted to correct a piece of information I gave you that was, it was brought to my attention. It was wrong. Originally, when I spoke with the clerk's office, we thought November 2nd was the deadline, but it's actually 180 days before the term of May 17th. So November 17th would be the deadline. I just wanted to correct that. I sent you a memo over the weekend with two different, I, there, I was trying, I was challenged to put a, something in the packet with numbers, because I didn't have a specific recommendation from Town Board members. So we put in the packet an average of comparables and then a, a bump down from that. And then I just had a couple of things in the email that I sent to you. In particular, I think we're recommending that the Town Board reinstate some level of compensation. And I would encourage that, although I really appreciate the generosity of the Town Board to zero out your stipends. Four years ago, I am concerned about that being a privilege not everyone can afford, and particularly the cost that it takes to pay, cover childcare and, and the time that's needed. And certainly, I have really appreciated that the Town Board members have leaned in with the Town Board. In the last four years, you've been very engaged. You've, you know, I have reported in a more thorough way and been tracking statistics, and so meetings have been longer, but I feel like part of the, the length of the meetings has paid off in terms of us really being able to dig into the issues of poverty and homelessness, and I appreciate that. So we've provided you the comparables that you asked for, and I would just, you know, if you have any questions about the email that I sent out, I'd be, I'd be happy to answer those questions.
And I would just add to the date issue, there is a Town Board meeting, a regular Town Board meeting scheduled for November 9th. So you could vote at that meeting, and that would be before the deadline of the 17th. So any questions for Danielle? Jared?
I didn't have a question for Danielle, but a, a comment for the board, because I know that it was, we're missing two people tonight. And I think that we're gonna need them for having the discussion, for just, for the sake of the brevity of the conversation. You know, if other folks feel the same way, I would just make a motion that we would hold this in, in committee, I guess, or whatever version of that we have for Town Board meetings until the next time, so we can get Julie and Theresa in, in their words for it, so.
Mary Alice?
Yeah, I think, I think we need to, what I would like to see for us to do is to come up with some kind of consensus in terms of the amount of money that we think these should be, and then keep it in committee so that we can allow the public to reflect on it, and also give an opportunity for Julie and Shuris to join in the conversation. So in that spirit, I think I'd let you know what my thoughts are on this process. I've already sent this to Danielle and Wayne. I feel that, one, right now, the Township Supervisor and the Township Assessor make different amount, different amounts of money, and I think that we need to rectify that in this cycle here. And so I think that we need to be paying at the same amount for Supervisor and for Assessor. The second thing that I want to mention is that, you know, we just passed a resolution, well, we, it is up for vote to provide the amount for the next four years for the clerk and for the mayor, which was 1%. So I guess what I'm gonna propose in terms of an amount is some amount that is for both the Assessor and the Supervisor, which is between 68 and 70,000 for the first year, and then a 1% raise for every subsequent year. And the other thing that I wanted to say was, I, I had a conversation with Diane today. We were talking about a couple of things, and one thing that she brought up was, what is the purpose of some of the, the stipends that we get? And so it made me think about, you know, there are different life, different things that people come to the board with. Some people have children, some people have elderly parents and so forth. And originally, my thought was is that the Town Board should not have a stipend. But kind of reflecting on that a little bit, I think that we should take into consideration that sometimes people have to have babysitters. Sometimes they have to hire people to come in for an hour a night. And so I think it's appropriate for us to have a small amount of stipend to ensure that we're not asking people to pay out of pocket so that they can attend meetings. Something that could be anywhere from $50 a month. There's one meeting on average, so that would be $600. But those are the things that I'm thinking about right now.
Okay. Any other comments from board members at this point? Bill Brown and then Jared.
Yeah, I, I agree with Mary Alice. I think we should at least try to get something on the table so we can have actual amounts in a packet for the public to see. So far, they haven't seen any amounts. I'd also ask that the email that Danielle sent that explained the reasoning for the recommendations and things be made part of this meeting's packet, if possible, if you can put it on this meeting's with, with the information that was available online for this meeting. I think that would be good. I mean, if we've talked about the email, so it's somebody's go for you. If we don't put it out there anyways, they might as well put it on the, online. I did have a question about the ordinance itself. Section one, the Township Supervisor broke, broke down the, the partial years, May, May through December of next year, and January through May of 25. The others all have one-year periods. I think we should stick with the one-year periods, because section one says the annual salaries for Township officials shall be as follows. I think it'd be clear if you just kept it, the May 17th, 2021, to May 15th, 2022, like we did with the, like you did with the clerk and the Town Board. Yeah, as far as starting with the amounts, I think I, I agree that I think they should both probably be set to the same amount. I don't see a big reason for them to be different. And I'd be okay with the small jump this year. It looks like some of the other, some of the other comparables are higher. Are those, there's a big range. I don't, I don't really think going with the average was the right way to look at it, although that's a starting point. Cause some of those are real high, and that distorts the average. But I think somewhere around 69, 70,000 for the first year, and then one to one and a half percent per year after that is something I'd go with.
Any other comments? Jared?
First, just to what Mary Alice was saying. You know, and I don't disagree that, I guess that the stipend could be there. I'm sure if we, if the, will the board is to approve it, I, and I'm on the board the next time around, I will happily just donate mine to the Angel Donor Fund, because I know I won't need it. And individual board members can do as, as they need according to their wishes, but I wouldn't be opposed to putting it on there since we all can take the liberty of, you know, doing, giving that away if, if we didn't need it ourselves, rather than just pulling it out from underneath people. So I'm, I'm okay with approving that it's there. Just trusting that people will do the right thing with it if they don't, if they don't need the money, and it can just get turned back into funds for, funds for township. I was leaning somewhere in the, I guess the, I don't know, Bill, I'm with you. I don't know if the, because the range is so different between some of the comparables, if the average was the right way to go. I do think that the, from what was proposed, I, I think I'm leaning more towards something of an increase closer to average, maybe a 2% or, or something over the four years, because I do feel like we're below where we should be. Rather than just the single, but maybe if we take that first year to 70, and then do one and a half or something like that afterwards, we'll, they'll, they'll end up much closer. So I personally was going closer to the average probably than the 1% that, that was proposed. And yeah, those, those were my two thoughts on that.
Any other thoughts? Dennis?
Yeah, okay, so I really, I haven't had time to really think about this seriously, so I appreciate having a little more time to look at it. Cause I've been out of town for a week, but some amount of increase, and I like the idea of equalizing the Assessor and the Supervisor. I think that seems fair. Both work pretty hard for the community. As far as stipends for the board, I can tell you that when we withdrew them and we went to zero, I wasn't in a very good financial position that, that year, and so it actually made a difference for me in some respects. But, you know, I can appreciate the fact that at the time, we were wanting to feed as much financial help to the, to the township as possible. I'm pretty happy that Danielle has been really efficient in locating grants that help support some of the programs that we're doing very effectively, including just the, the pictogram digital imagery that we're just talking about. I think it's okay to give the township something, but like, you know, I think I agree with Mary Alice. 50 bucks is plenty, if that. So this really just kind of token the fact that we do actually have to think and, and, you know, we do work in the township off, you know, as well. And it's a responsibility we have. The end.
Thanks. Any other thoughts? Bill Culbrook?
I agree. I believe it was Jared that said, I think this is a pretty important vote, and, and if in fact, there's still time on the calendar to, to get this voted on prior to when they go into effect, I really would like the opportunity for the other two members to be present, so they can join the discussion and listen to the, to the discussion as well. I value their vote.
Hey, I just want to add that if you really want to create, I'm sorry, eliminate the discrepancy in the Assessor and Supervisor pay, you're gonna have to do one per, one year for the Supervisor prorated, because of the differences in the terms. It's up to you. You guys can do whatever you want, but I just wanted to, if you really, if the goal is to eliminate the discrepancy for the Supervisor, you're gonna have to do at least one prorated salary term.
Okay, that's a good point. Well, okay, just to recap, it sounds like there's consensus among the board that the Supervisor and Assessor should be equalized, and it sounds like there has to be a prorated set re-year to do that. The stipend for the board members, there seems to be consensus in support of that. Board members have suggested $50 a meeting, $600 a year. I think what was on the table 840 for the amount, but somewhere in that range. And then sounds like your, your consensus on starting somewhere around 70, and then increasing one to one and a half percent every year after that. Does that sound, reflect what you said? Okay, so I have a question for Fred Grosser. We're not in committee. Can the board simply vote to send this to the next Town Board meeting? How should we proceed?
Well, I don't know that there's anything particularly need to do, because you don't have the resolution for numbers in it. So you can just put it on the agenda for the meeting once it's in the final form.
Okay, so we don't have, we actually don't have a motion on the floor either. So, so this would be just treated as a new item on the next agenda meeting, or an item on the next agenda.
The next meeting, you're going to finally hear the numbers, the dollar amounts, and then vote on.
Okay, so that would be the November 9th Town Board meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so we don't have to take action tonight to do that.
Right.
Okay, Mary Alice?
Wondering if somebody has a recommendation in terms of if we're gonna, we're basically putting, or what our thoughts are, how is the public gonna know the exact numbers that we're proposing? So is there any thought in terms of how we do that? We kind of have a range right now. We have kind of a consensus. I mean, it's not, we don't have exact numbers, put it that way. We don't have exact numbers that we. We don't have exact numbers that we can enter in.
I mean, there'll be numbers in the agenda packet next month.
Right, I and I understand that, but I guess what I'm saying is perhaps if we're going to put Danielle, if we're gonna put your your memo that you, not the memo, sorry, the email that you had written. Perhaps we should have just a summary of of what the town board has talked about so that the public knows before the Thursday before the vote, where exactly we stand. Add that to the memo, I guess is what I'm saying.
Okay, I could update my memo with a statement that summarizes the mayor's statement just now. So I, like I said, it's an email, so I have to send it as a PDF anyway, and I want to make sure there's so I will send that to the clerk's office tomorrow. And I'll basically summarize it as my understanding based on the conversation from last night that there's emerging consensus of X, Y, and Z, and we will prepare an ordinance for you. Actually, I believe it's resolution, resolution for you next month, and this would be the date that we vote on it and also this is the deadline by which you'd need to vote on it. So I I will see, reach out to the clerk tomorrow with that.
Thank you. And and we just noticed Danielle on the resolution, the two draft resolutions for discussion that you sent out in the one, two, in the third paragraph, it referred to a four-year term been beginning May seventeenth, twenty eleven. That should be
And you mentioned mayor at the beginning that there was something about the name of the township that you had corrected when you first.
That was on Wayne's
Oh, okay.
Contract.
It was a different, okay.
Different, different, different documents, yeah. Okay, so this item will reappear on the November ninth town board agenda. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Have a good evening.
And with no further business, this meeting is adjourned and we'll begin the city council meeting as soon as the clerk gives us the go ahead. Okay, this is the I'd like to call to order the October twelfth meeting of the Urbana City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Brown?
Here.
Colbrook?
Here.
Percy? Lau? Miller?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Boo?
Here.
Dale Marlin?
Here. Next up is approval of minutes from the previous meetings, August twenty-fourth, September fourteenth, September twenty-eighth and October fifth, which was a special meeting. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Moved by Jared.
Seconded.
Seconded by Bill Colbrook. Any corrections? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Brown?
Yes.
Colbrook?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Whoa. Yes.
That motion passes. Are there any additions to the agenda? I don't believe there are. All right, next up is the public input and presentation section. We have a presentation from finance and that involves the financial forecast.
Let me get my screen up here for you. Okay, so everybody's seeing that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. It's a little different trying to do a presentation inside of Zoom. So tonight, we're we're here to talk about the financial forecast. This is generally the first step in our budget process. So we use this to kind of set the stage and make some high-level decisions about the budget. This focuses exclusively on the general fund, so I just want to be clear about that. The general fund pays for most basic city services, police, fire, most of public works. So we'll launch into it. Whoops. Touchy. Okay, so a few things to bear in mind as we talk about this. First of all, this year is nothing if not unusual. So there's more uncertainty this year than at any time in the recent past when we've talked about the forecast. Also, we pushed this earlier in the fiscal year because we wanted to to, you know, really kind of get a feel for what's happening here with the pandemic and the resulting recession. But that means when we're looking at the current year, we have much less data to work with. So for example, when we're looking at sales tax, we only have a few months versus, you know, last year we had about six months. There's a lot of factors here that affect how things progress that are just beyond our control. So I really want you to focus more on trends than, you know, getting into the weeds. And our goal here is to be able to to look at what we see for the future and make planned corrections rather than having to react and, you know, for example, make budget cuts very quickly. We just, we want to be thoughtful. So there's risk in every forecast and that's why we prepare a range of projections. So you're seeing a piece of it, but behind this, there's a lot more work. There's three complete scenarios for the general fund. We're gonna focus here on the likely scenario, which is the one that staff believes is most probable. And that's what we will plan around. But again, there is risk here. And so what you'll see, I think we'll 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 look at when we do our quarterly reports now and including a little more detail on revenues and what we see happening with some of these major revenues. And that'll help us kind of mitigate the the risk by just keeping closer tabs on those. So again, this year isn't like other years. After several years of really hard work, the mayor and the council made some very difficult decisions to achieve a structurally balanced budget. And then, as the mayor says, sometimes COVID happened. So now we have a COVID nineteen pandemic and then accompanying accompanying that, we have a recession. So let's look back really quickly. I think it's helpful just to have a reminder of where, what we've done these last few years. So beginning in FY eighteen and through the current budget year FY twenty-one, we made expenditure reductions that were cumulatively one point three four million and revenue increases that were one point one five million. So that's one point four nine million. That's where we closed that one and a half million dollar structural budget gap. And then, at that point, we thought things looked really good for the foreseeable future. And then again, the pandemic. So right now, where we are, is all that careful planning leaves us with a substantial fund balance. That allows us to take some time to be thoughtful about how we respond to this. We can wait for a little more clarity, I think, before taking action. But we should be using that time to prepare for what might be on the horizon. So our path forward out of this is gonna largely depend on how soon there's a widespread availability of a vaccine and also how risk averse consumers are as we begin to move towards a new normal. Those are the two things that I think are gonna be key to the recovery. So we'll look at some specific numbers here in relation to sales tax because that's a really big number for us and then we'll get into the the meat of the forecast. So in this year's budget, sales taxes are about a quarter, a little more than a quarter of our general fund revenue. You might notice that most years, I said nearly a third. It's not that much this year. It's it's a little bit more than a quarter. So what this chart does is it takes state and home rule sales tax and it adjusts for inflation and it shows the trend. So the green line is the state sales tax and the blue line is the home rule sales tax. And you can see this goes all the way back to FY oh six. So you can even see here the last recession, the great recession and where we dipped down. You know, and didn't really catch up for a couple of years. And then out here, you can see where we where we were last fiscal year, which which was actually looking quite good. And then where we expect to be this year. And then you see a little bounce back that we're expecting in the next fiscal year. So then looking, I was really, I was personally very curious about sort of what was happening when you get down to the details of month to month as this the situation unrolled. And so what this chart shows you is the blue line is FY twenty sales tax revenue. This is state and home rule combined. And that's for twenty twenty. And then the green line is what it was last year for these same months. So when we get sales tax revenue from the state, it's three months behind generally when the actual transaction occurs. So in June, which was revenue for transactions that happened in March. So the very beginning of this event, really, when the governor issued his stay-at-home order, which was, I think, effective on March twenty-first, our sales tax revenues were down about five and a half percent over the same month the year prior. And then in July, so sales in April, which was the first really full month of kind of the whole shutdown, twenty percent. But then after that, it started to really bounce back. And then you can see in September, which would be for June sales, we're actually up five percent over where we were last year. Don't get all excited about that because most likely there were some delayed payments that caused that fluctuation. But even in October, which is for July, we were just about dead even, which is actually surprisingly good because because our initial estimate early on was that we thought we might lose overall about a third of all our sales tax revenue. Thirty thirty, thirty percent or more for the entire fiscal year. All right, so let's talk about the the forecast. So we really look at two primary indicators when we're working on the forecast. We look at recurring expenditures as a percentage of recurring revenues. So that goes to our ability to sustain programs and services. And we compare that to our policy goal and our financial policies that the city council approves. And our goal is that our recurring expenditures should not be more than ninety-eight point five percent of recurring revenues. That's our cushion when revenue revenues fluctuate a little bit. We also look at fund balance as a percentage of recurring expenditures. And that goes to our our ability to withstand downturns, respond to disasters and so forth. And our current policy, which council just changed within this this last year, is that we want to be at twenty percent of recurring expenditures. So you you get the pretty pictures, but again, there's a whole lot of numbers behind this. When when we look at the forecast out through FY twenty-six, at in every year here, the recurring revenues are lower than the recurring expenditures. This is a real completely opposite of what we saw last year when we, when we thought we'd finally solve the structural budget problem. So this could reverse itself very easily in a couple of years if things go really well, but obviously, this isn't something that we can do for the long term. And we, I also took a look at how fast are our recurring revenue and expense growing? So on this chart, green is revenue and blue is expense. And you can see we get pretty good growth here in FY twenty-two, which is as we think we're kind of starting to come out of this. And then revenues grow relative fast relative to the rate of expenditures for a couple of years, but then they kind of even out. So one of the things we forecast again is fund balance. And so this chart looks at our unassigned fund balance and this looks at all three of the scenarios that we developed. So green is the likely scenario, which is is what we think is likely to happen. And even in that case, you know, fund balances trending down. Blue is our best case and it actually, it drops a little bit, but then it bounces right back up. Orange is the worst case and it just drops and it continues to drop until it, well, basically ends up at zero sometime out here. Obviously, we're not gonna let that happen. If we were headed in that direction, we would be making budget cuts before that could happen. So focusing in on the likely scenario again, which is the one that that we think is most probable. Right, right now, at the end of this year, we expect our fund balance to be over ten million dollars, which is, which is very healthy. It's it's better than we thought we would be doing. And here, the blue line is our twenty percent policy where we want to be. And you can see again, that drops each year, but it doesn't get below that twenty percent level until somewhere out here around fiscal year twenty-four. So to cut to the chase, in terms of strategy, what what we are recommending is that, A, we need to prioritize economic recovery for local businesses. Because that's really what's gonna help us recover from from the recession. Again, we need to continue to prioritize economic development even in the long term. And we've talked about this every year when we talk about the forecast. That's what drives revenue growth. We really need to be careful and extremely cautious about any new expenditures. We should, this is not really the time to be talking about new programs and services. We need to be preparing for expenditure reductions or revenue increases in the event things don't bounce back and we need to close that gap. We should also accelerate next year's forecast. So typically, we would do this maybe January, February. So this year, we're early. Next year, we should be on a similar kind of schedule. Because I think by that point, we'll have a much better understanding of when when we're likely to have a vaccine and get it distributed and, you know, how things are looking at that point. And then finally, once we're once we're through this, we need to focus on rebuilding any reserves that we may have spent down in the meantime. So I I I think this actually might be the the first time I've I've ever said this and I've been working in government finance for a very long time, decades. But I really think our best strategy at the moment is just to wait and see. And again, we can do that because we have that healthy fund balance. Any cuts we we make at this point, after three, four years of cuts already, are going to be painful. There's really not anything significant that we can cut without affecting staff. And so again, I'd like to say, let's wait and see. Let's give it a little bit of time and monitor very carefully. But again, be prepared for the possibility that we're gonna have to make significant budget cuts. So there you go. I'm happy to answer questions.
Questions for Elizabeth. Dennis?
Yeah, Elizabeth, thanks for the report. Maybe not as drastic as I pictured it could be. But I do have a concern. How will the forecast change if the small businesses in our community continue to suffer and we see maybe closing and not reopening in the future? And I E. the the loss of some businesses completely due to the pandemic.
So I think that's a challenging question to answer. So we don't want that to happen and we should, you know, make efforts to to avoid that, I think. But just to some extent, to be honest, for example, if I, you know, if I would have shopped at one business, but that business is no longer available, it doesn't mean I'm not shopping for something. I may just be shopping somewhere else. So it's not a good thing. We we definitely want to avoid that if at all possible. But it's not as if every business that we lose, we lose all the revenue necessarily that goes with it.
The the answer would be that to to encourage people to shop local, I E. shop Urbana.
Absolutely.
I I would add that the the big unknown, and I've spent hours and hours on the phone and in meetings last week, is dealing with the possibility. You know, we, Champaign County is part of a larger region in terms of the COVID response in terms of the state level. So we're part of Region Six. It's a twenty-one county region. Our positivity rates are much lower than the surrounding counties, but we are at this point still included with these other counties. So one of the big unknowns is what's going to happen if the rates in those surrounding counties continue to rise to the point where additional mitigation efforts are being put into place. And that will have an impact on some of the businesses already hardest hit. So our our local restaurants, bars and that sort of thing. So that's one of the things we have to keep an eye on. It's why we're, we still have to be very, very cautious in terms of It's why we're, we still have to be very, very cautious in terms of any expenditures. But I, I can't emphasize enough how important and what a difference the, the, the sacrifices that we've made over the last three years and the votes that you've taken over the last three years have put us in the position, the position that we, we, we're in today. We have some time, it bought us time and, and it allowed us to maintain our core functions. And it allows us to maintain our programs and services, which are incredibly important to the people of Urbana in maintaining housing and quality of life and, and essentials that, that people need to, to weather this pandemic. So, so the, the activities and the public health compliance of counties all around us are actually going to have a direct effect on our economic outlook over the next six months to a year. We're really, this is the beginning of the middle of the pandemic for us. And as we go into the cold weather months, it, you know, our, it's going to be a very, very big challenge. Mary Alice. You're muted.
Elizabeth, I think that when we talked about the cannabis tax, you said that we would first start seeing that in October. Have we started to see what that tax is bringing in for the city?
No, I checked again today and we, we, we don't have that, that number yet. But this is the first month that we should receive revenue from that tax.
And how does that work into your forecast for the sales tax, the graphs that you sent us?
So so, so the, so the, so the can, I guess cannabis sales have impact in a couple of ways, right? So first of all, there's the state and home rule sales tax, and it is, it is subject to those taxes. And then there's the separate additional 3% local cannabis tax that we impose. So it affects all of those numbers.
So is that built into your models that you presented today?
Yes, it is.
The second thing I wanted to ask you about was the, I mean, typically in a, in a budget year, we'll have a certain key projects that we're budgeting for that are more kind of one offs. So for example, there's been a lot of talk about replacing arms. I know that's something that's on the horizon. We've also talked about the one door. Are there other items that are, well, and then in your financial forecast, you said that some other expenditures are anticipated in the forecast. So based on what you said there, in, in all the fund balances that you provided to us tonight, it takes into consideration one door, additional funds to facilitate remote work during COVID, and arms. Is that correct?
That is correct, as best we can anticipate. I mean, I, I have very specific numbers, obviously, for one door because that was a set aside from the salary reductions and for the records management system for police, there, there's some guesswork involved in some other numbers.
Are there other items, perhaps the mayor or if Carol's on, can speak to other items that you were hoping to fund? But now we're kind of put on the, we may fund them depending on what the financial forecast is?
At this point, I don't have any.
You don't have any? Okay. And then my last question had to do with the retained risk fund. You had mentioned in your memo that we were going to have to do a one-time deposit of about $750,000. And then that is in anticipation of next fiscal year. Is that correct?
Yeah, I, I don't think it'll be necessary to do that until next fiscal year. But we've settled a number of large claims and we've been spending down the balance. So I thought it was better to anticipate that since that's a significant expense in the general fund.
And that's taken into consideration in the charts that you showed us, the 750 for next year?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I, I, I would say in response to your question, Mary Alice, I mean, any, any large item that, that comes up is going to have to be scrutinized very carefully. And if, you know, if it's optional, it can be delayed. And if it makes sense to do it, delay it, then we, then we would. It's not, we're, our goal here is to maintain our essential services. Obviously, things in the capital improvement plan, our fund will be a different category. But as far as general fund expenditures, it's to maintain services, keep staff so we can continue to provide the level of programs and services that we are now and focus really on what our residents need and what our local businesses need. And if, and if people have an opportunity to choose between shopping Amazon and shopping safely here in Urbana and paying local sales taxes, I strongly encourage people to shop local.
So one of the big things that we spent money on was a facility study. And I know that if any facilities that we decide to work on, improve, build, whatever, that would come out of the capital and not the general. Is that correct?
That, that, that's correct.
Okay.
And, and we have, of course, anticipated based on council policy, a certain level of transfer from the general fund to capital improvements on an annual basis.
I think Carol had, could add to that.
Well, if you'll remember, and you know, this is all something that will, that will develop as, as we get more information and see how this plays out. But you might recall that we had built into the capital improvement plan going forward that we would borrow money in order to, to do some of the, the larger projects, like the two fire stations and the storage building at, at Public Works that will unlock other opportunities. And, you know, well, the, the key to that was our ability to pay it back out of, out of general fund dollars. So we'll really have to look carefully at that. And that might mean that we need to push, push those projects out a little bit, but it's too soon to, to tell at the moment.
There's just, um, there's just a great deal of uncertainty. And the only thing we can be certain of is that we do have an emergency fund that we can draw on. And, and this, this constitutes, I think, an emergency. Jared?
Just one quick question, Elizabeth, on the wait and see. Do we have a realistic expectation for what that really means? Is that like, we're really going to be operating as per usual? And, and then this time in 2021, we'll be seeing what we see? And then really trying to make some big decisions then? Or are we going to see another forecast in a couple of months before we really start talking about the budget? Is there going to be another one that we do that'll take into consideration how we form next year's budget?
So I, I'm not planning to do another forecast before we formulate next year's budget. But what we will do, as I said, is we're really going to spend some additional time monitoring those major revenues. So if things do start to vary from, from what we're expecting here in this forecast, we can come back and have a conversation about that. But I, I think next fall is probably the point where we're going to have much better information. We'll, we'll have a good sense of kind of how is this going to end? Are we, do we, do we have a vaccine? Is there a plan to get it distributed? We'll have much better information about how consumers have, you know, responded to the recession because we'll have many more months of data. So I think the key, that the variable here is all on the revenue side, right? It's, but at the expense side, we know pretty well what that is. So I think by just tracking very closely those major revenues, we'll, we'll know if, if there's a problem that we need to come back.
Okay. And I don't know if you had seen it or not, but we were all sent some public comments, particular one about the budget from a guy named Edgar Garrett, who attached a PDF. I don't know if you saw that or not, but he raised some, some interesting points. Some of that stuff goes over my head because I don't know even how those things get into your consideration. But if you had the opportunity to respond to some of those comments and how we take those into consideration, I think that they seem pretty useful and well informed.
Yeah, so I, I did, I did see that just this afternoon, and I have not had a lot of time to ponder it. But I think one, one of his points was basically that we should be doing cuts now and not waiting. And, you know, I would, I would probably agree with that nine times out of 10. But I, but I think this year is different. Both because things are so uncertain, but we expect to have certainty, you know, within a reasonable period of time. And also, also because we have that really healthy fund balance. And so under, like I said, I don't think I've ever before said we should spend down fund balance to buy time rather than making cuts. But I think for us, that, that probably makes sense right now.
And to, and to that, I, I would also add, if there's ever a time when our residents and our businesses and our community needs the city to be there for them, it's going to be over the next six months to one year. And further cuts mean cuts in staff, programs, services, and we, we need to be here for the city. We really need to be here for the community.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. And the mayor is exactly right. I mean, more cuts means we're going to have to have some very difficult conversations about what services or programs are, are we never, are we no longer going to offer? Because that's, that's kind of where we're at after four years cuts.
Any other questions for Elizabeth? Okay, thank you. And again, this will be, we're keeping a very close eye on, on the trends and this is, there's just never been this much uncertainty. And so we appreciate people's understanding and we'll be bringing updates to you on a regular basis. And a budget amendment next week, so. Okay, we'll move on to public input. If you wish to address the council, please raise your hand. Give it just a minute. Okay, let's start with Alan Axelrod.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, forgive me, there is someone cooking here and I'm not going to stop him from eating. So my name is Alan Max Axelrod. I'm the campaign lead for No Ameren Shutoffs, a zero-dollar, all-volunteer statewide grassroots effort. We have won three statewide moratoriums, all of them voluntary with egregious holes in them, which is why I'm talking to you today. Just to recap, the latest moratorium announced on September 22nd extending until March 31st of 2021 is a voluntary moratorium, which Ameren, Illinois blatantly violated within 72 hours of its adoption. Further, it is means tested in a way that allows for loose interpretation, which has allowed Ameren, Illinois to shut off people's utilities, even if they qualify by the Illinois Commerce Commission's press release. But because they had not received lie-heap in the 12 months prior, they are still going to be shut off. That's going to affect a solid number of people in our region and potentially also in our town. We know that they had shut off a resident in Champaign right before this moratorium began. And we know that they are doing a trickle of shut offs so that they can keep their reporting numbers low. This is in violation of the best practice recommended from the 2007 Congressional Research Service Analysis entitled Pandemic Influenza and Analysis of State Preparedness and Response Plans, which specifically enumerated utility shut-off moratorium as a very crucial aspect of pandemic safety. And they also were talking about state and local officials. In the absence of the governor's use of 20 ILCS 3305/7 (12), which allows him to issue an executive order to stop utility shut-offs in the same way that he stops evictions. Let's also reflect on the, for a second, on the fact that the governor has stopped evictions despite the fact that the CDC eviction moratorium already went into effect. He recognized in his actions that putting the burden on people who are already struggling to survive during the pandemic to file for protections according to the CDC guidelines was onerous and was going to result in a lot of harm being done. That is why he continued the eviction moratorium by executive order. Yet, his actions with the voluntary utility shut-offs moratorium is contradictory. Tenants and residents have to call the utility corporation and say that they are experiencing financial hardship. That is supposed to be enough, but again, we know that Ameren, Illinois violated that. And what we also know is that Patrick Hayes, the legal counsel for the Illinois Municipal League, stated that home rule governments have the ability to make ordinances regarding disconnect notices due to non-payment and can regulate that. There are 217 home rule governments in Illinois. We intend to talk to all of them. You are the one that I've been talking to the most. I would very much appreciate it if you were the first to actually enact this resolution that we have proposed that I hope to be on next week's agenda. The resolution calls for a few things. The resolution declares, as you all have basically done individually in action, that utility shut-offs is a pandemic health, safety risk. Two is that you also recognize that the governor actually has the ability to use ILCS 20 ILCS 3305/7 (12) to stop utility shut-offs. But it's not naming him, it's just naming his office. It's not any sort of aggressive accusatory thing. And the other things that it does is it commits to drafting an ordinance on utility shut-offs. And that step is important because legal staff needs time to figure out the exact extent to which the utility, to which the municipality can intervene on utility shut-offs. We know that both water, electricity, and gas services in Urbana are all through corporations, which means that you all have a burdensome level of homework to do in order to do this safely. The city decatur last Monday passed a utility shut-off moratorium specifically for water because they provide municipal water service. That was a lot simpler process for them. But the reality is that we have to protect all of our residents. And I just want to say that also, if we're expecting to see a decrease in the sales and use tax in our community, that I would just like to suggest that preventing the punishment of individuals for having accrued utility debt during a pandemic, when our unemployment rate is still over 10% in this state, which is over double what the statewide unemployment rate was last year, that we should protect our residents and allow them to spend money to survive in our city, which might also help our budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Next up is Tracy Chung.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, I'm Tracy Chung from Urbana. Tonight, I'm going to comment on what happened during the FOIA discussion last week. For weeks, City Attorney James Simon, FOIA Officer Kurt Bowman, and Mayor Marlin have stood by their claims that the city had every right to come up with their own fee determination for recurrent requesters. This claim was spoken multiple times, presented during the FOIA presentation on July 27th, and was even published on Urbana City website. So during public input last week, I said that now that the Public Access Councilor has notified the city that charging recurrent requesters fees that are the same as voluminous requests, even though the requests are not voluminous, is illegal. I said that the city will try to spin it as such that the requests were all actually voluminous requests. As predicted, this is exactly what James Simon did during the FOIA discussion session. When asked by Jared Miller to clarify what the city had been doing, this is what Simon said, I quote, "I don't know what the city has charged recurrent requesters unless they are in connection. The request is from a recurrent requester and also happens to be a voluminous, voluminous request on top of that." Well, this statement is not true. Last week, Bill Brown summarized very concisely and clearly what the FOIA statute says about recurrent requesters and that the statute does not give the city the right to come up with a special fee schedule just for recurrent requesters. But amazingly, even after his earlier statement, James Simon decided to challenge Bill Brown and say he did not agree, even though the PAC's ruling is exactly what Bill Brown summarized. Mary Alice also brought up this point, echoing the PAC and the actual statute, which says that the fee should only be, should only apply to recurrent requesters if the request was voluminous. And she said that, that is not how the city had been operating and wanted a clarification. FOIA Officer Kurt Bowman gave the clarification, but actually not really. He proceeded to dodge the question and instead go about on He proceeded to dodge the question and instead go about on paper fees and storage fees. So I had appealed the ridiculous charges to the PAC and received a copy of the response from Kurt Baumann to the PAC just last Wednesday. And in his reply, he continued the deceit and he actually wrote to the PAC saying, I quote, "In both cases, Urbana notified the requested that Urbana was treating the requests as coming from a recurrent请求. However, those notices erroneously omitted language that indicating that Urbana was also treating the requests as voluminous." It is crazy how, how they can suddenly make up things which were, which is completely different from what Baumann and Simon were claiming weeks ago. So how are Simon and Baumann allowed to operate this way? I keep thinking why the city leadership refuses to admit that they were wrong, apologize, and strive harder to make amends and regain the trust of the public again. Last week, Mayor Marlin and Carol Mitten tried to play victim by saying that the public is creating a toxic environment by pointing out misconduct that the city will just not fix. Instead, what I think the city leadership is doing is creating a toxic work environment for their staff by creating a culture where employees perhaps are afraid or just feel like they cannot admit their mistakes and have to keep perpetuating the lies. A healthy work environment is one where if unintentional mistakes are made, it is okay. And the employee should feel comfortable saying, yes, we screwed up. And leadership will work together with the employee to honestly fix the problem, not allow them to dig themselves into a hole that just gets deeper and deeper and let the problem just go on. Finally, a few more seconds. Mayor Marlin, you mentioned several times about the vacancies for boards and commissions and how there are empty seats on boards like the CPRB. Well, if there are empty seats, why are you turning down applicants? Are you reaching out to applicants who applied during prior but very recent openings that were passed over in favor of other candidates? Are you and Chief Seraphin interviewing candidates and only choosing the ones who you feel will not be critical of the city and the police? Thank you.
Next up is Benjamin.
Hello, that should be me. Yes, alright. So here I am, just a really quick note off the top. The people who elected you can't create a toxic environment by publicly voicing their opinion. They just did that, that's not how free speech works. But anyway, I'm enjoying this, another exciting night to limit the free speech of Urbana citizens because we're tired of hearing from them. Incidentally, quick note, another quick note for you. Agenda says public input, and I noticed Mayor Marlin, you announced it as public input and presentations, and then started with a city presentation. Weird, weird flex there, but we'll just roll with it. Also, your Zoom instructions say that people are currently limited to three minutes of speaking time. You may want to update those. I know you're desperately trying to change that, but for right now, that instruction you are sending out is untrue. Just like all of you are exhausted from listening so hard, we're tired of researching and digging and trying so hard to find the truth and share information, and it's starting to hurt. I'm tired of hitting my head against the brick wall of overcharged FOIA requests, ignored requests for comment, misgendering without an apology, being literally cut off mid-sentence for not adhering to arbitrary and illegal rules changes. It just keeps going on and on. We're getting now consistent. Every week, we have the city lawyer lied about this. Whoa, no, it's not true. The next week, well, the city lawyer lied the previous week. It's happening nonstop. And these new rules that are being talked about would stop us from saying we literally have proof of the city lawyer trying. Anyway, getting off my own thread here. I also wanted to mention how tired of I am of the city lawyer pretending he's an elected official who gets to voice his personal opinion instead of just being there for legal reasons and keeping his mouth shut when it comes to what he feels or how he interprets things. It's getting a little out of hand with the amount of comment that that gentleman is allowed. Sorry. Anyway, look, I'm pretty sure, I've repeated it several times in several calls, but I wouldn't be surprised if none of you have actually looked into the kid that the police detained for being black during the Leah Lewis incident. I broke it down with timestamps, quotes from the cops that were obvious lies, most especially that the young man met the description before they detained him, but no one seems to care. If any of you have looked into it, please let me know by getting ahold of me. Benjamin Stone, you can find me on the internet. If you haven't looked into it and you would like to get the details again, let me know. I keep my notes. I just, also, a quick note, I don't want to, but I'm ready to file an Open Meetings Act complaint about the number of times that I see council members turning off their video cameras during these council meetings. I'm starting to find it extraordinarily inappropriate. I don't, we don't care if you stand up, if you have to turn it off to go to the bathroom for five minutes or something like that, that's cool. But when we're seeing people shutting off their screens for 20, 25 minutes at a time, that's really insulting from this end. Because for all we know, you could be sitting there scrolling through Facebook on your phone or reading a book or muted and just have the volume turned up real loud halfway listening. Please show your faces, show that you are present. Check in every so often, just be like, hey, if I need my video camera off, check in every five, 10 minutes just to show people you're still there. It's kind of weird every so often. Now that I've had chances to talk and there have been two people looking back at me from a city council that's meant to have six, seven people there. I've just had to ramble tonight because as everything went on, I just had more and more to add. But just remember, it's really easy to set rules that restrict speech and it's really, really hard to undo them once you've put them in place. I get how difficult it is and the time spent, we really, really do. But consider, this is the only way we have to talk to all of you. This is, we get five minutes a week and we appreciate it. It sounds like y'all think we abuse the privilege. We love it and we love hearing comments back. We love hearing you say, we hear you. So, you know, just listen a bit more and maybe we won't have to be quite as snarky. Enjoy the rest of your night. Stay safe.
Thank you. Next up is Austin Hoffman.
Hello, can you hear me alright?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Austin Hoffman. I'm an Urbana resident in Ward 5. I am coming to speak to you today on Indigenous Peoples' Day. I want to wish you a happy Indigenous Peoples' Day and begin today by recognizing that this meeting, although being held virtually, is still being held on the traditional lands of the Peoria, Cascasia, Pianca Shaw, Waya, Miami, Muscutan, Odawa, Sock, Meskwaki, Hiccupu, Potawatomi, Ojibwe, and Chickasaw nations. And to be clear, it's not traditionally their land, it is still their land since it was acquired through theft and genocide and mass murder and elimination. So I wanted to talk about this because overall, I mean, this whole country was built by enslaved labor and on the land stolen and expropriated from indigenous people. But specifically in relation to the city of Urbana and why this should matter, especially to this council, is for, I think, at least, at least two reasons. One is that the city of Urbana glorifies, as this whole state does, the legacy of Abraham Lincoln, which of course is most remembered for the Emancipation Proclamation, although it didn't really reflect his views on racial equality. That, that's a somewhat separate issue. But, but he was also the author of many atrocities against the indigenous peoples of this country. Perhaps most notably, the largest mass execution in United States history, which took place on December 26, 1862, when 38 Dakota Warriors were hanged under the direct order of President Abraham Lincoln. In that very same year, 1862, President Lincoln signed the Moral Land Grant Act, which distributed public domain lands to raise funds for colleges across the nation. And of course, we house, Urbana partly houses one of these colleges, the University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign. So these, we sit in these halls named after colonial genocidal colonizers and they're built off of seed money from stolen land. So I have, I have three propositions for the council to consider. The first being that every single one of your meetings should begin with a land acknowledgement. It can be as short as the one that I gave you. It costs you nothing but a few minutes of your time. That is the least you can do to center the land that we all exist on. And I, I don't believe any of you have indigenous ancestry, so all of you are settlers or and so that should be acknowledged. The second is that the city of Urbana should, the municipality should formally recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day as a holiday. I know that it doesn't overtly celebrate Columbus Day, but the state of Illinois doesn't formally recognize it and you can be started, the start of changing that. These things cost you nothing but a little bit of your time. I am happy to work with the council and the city on beginning a land acknowledgement and consultation with these indigenous nations and adopting Indigenous Peoples' Day as a holiday. And finally, I want to echo the recommendations of Mr. Alan Axelrod and making sure this council does all that it can to ensure the utility shut off moratorium continues because that will of course disproportionately affect indigenous people, African-American people, people of color, and poor people. So first of all, there should be, we have no right to charge anybody rents or for utilities on land that is stolen in the first place. So these are very easy things that you can do to enact a modicum of justice for the horrific legacies of genocide, slavery, which continue today in the forms of environmental degradation, police violence, and exploitation through an inherently unjust economy. So I hope you will take those seriously and I look forward to hearing from you on those propositions.
Thank you. Next up is Christopher Hansen. Go ahead, Christopher. Are you on mute? We'll come back to Christopher. Grace Wilkin.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I want to echo and thank the previous speaker and all the previous speakers and I absolutely hope that you all are listening and considering our comments. And I'm sorry, I'll back up. My name is Grace Wilkin and I'm an Urbana resident. And I'd like to speak today on limiting public input. Number one is on regulating the time of public input. I don't agree on shortening the public input time, especially with no limitations. Does this mean that the council could vote to shorten public input every meeting? And to what extent, to only two speakers, to 10 minutes total? It's just really not clear. And in general, shortening the total amount of time for public input may create the issues of members of the public not having an opportunity to speak at all. When Chicago shortened their public input to three minutes each for only 30 minutes total, it created the issue of a few people monopolizing public input in every meeting and many people were continuously not allowed to speak. A Chicago Tribune article from last year quotes that Mayor Lightfoot listens to the speakers, takes notes, asks questions, and occasionally spars them on. "The former mayor treated them like background noise. Too many aldermen still do. They need to do better. Showing up to address elected representatives is an act of faith and democracy." End quote. Where is Urbana headed? Fortunately, this new change in code only applies to electronic meetings, but it seems like it's the beginning of a slippery slope of increasingly limiting and policing public input. Urbana needs to be the model, not the standard. Even if other cities have similar time constraints, this change to city code is a reflection on Urbana changing its standards and limiting public input for no other reason than not wanting to hear it. I'm very disappointed that this is even being considered and that it will likely pass. It is a symbol of the refusal to truly listen to the public and I think it will only create more need and demand for public input. My second concern on public input is regulating the contents of the input. Tone policing is a conversational tactic that dismisses the ideas being communicated when they are perceived to be delivered in an angry, frustrated, sad, fearful, or otherwise emotionally charged manner. It's a personal attack and an anti-debate tactic used based on criticizing a person for expressing emotion. It can be deliberate, and these are quotes from other articles that I've sent you the resources. It can be deliberate, a skilled politician might consider a tool in their toolbox to eschew tough topics. It can also be a behavior perpetuated by unconscious bias against oppressed or underrepresented populations like Black people, trans people, and women. It's wrong because the privileged like to avoid conversations that make them feel uncomfortable or ashamed. The ones who tone police like to remain oblivious and use the status quo to their advantage. Being subject to injustice is infuriating and the last thing anyone wants to hear is how their emotional response is wrong or could be more nuanced. Tone policing renders a perfectly valid complaint irrational. This article calls that the right action is to listen, check where we went right and wrong, and address how to do better in the future. The problem is that this change in code puts the responsibility of tone policing on the mayor and the city council. There needs to be clear limitations on content. There might be reasonable requests against foul language or direct physical threats, but there's too much gray area in the language as it's written now. Based on past experience, it seems like the mayor considers any criticism directed at herself, a council member, or staff to qualify as abusive and/or defamatory. Additionally, there is this issue of tone policing being a way to continue silencing voices of people who are emotionally charged because they've been negatively impacted by our city government, police, and schools. Please reflect on these issues and I urge you to not change the city code or at least don't allow to amend the amendment to shorten public input. Please keep it only to extend it. On some other issues, I also urge you to push for Urbana in the Visit Champaign County agreement. I'd like to see Urbana being more visible and prominent on this website. I also recommend that you freeze salary increases for elected officials, especially during the pandemic and since the full-time positions are already well above their median income in Urbana. On the discussion note, I recommend that you allow the new business in the Urbana Landmark Hotel to postpone opening until further, or until after the pandemic within reason. It seems like some of the planning, modeling, and permitting could be done sooner than spring 2021. Please utilize the space in the hotel towards the greater good of Urbana. And again, I've sent you these things and some other resources in an email and I hope that you can work on this and educate yourselves on tone policing and racial and social equity and all of these things that we very desperately need in our community and from you in particular. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Megan McDonald.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Alrighty. My name is Megan McDonald. I'm from Ward 5 in Urbana. I have lived here for almost a decade. I am tired today, most days, but especially today because at 5 o'clock in front of the Champaign County Courthouse, there was a rally and a small march to cancel rent and mortgages and to cancel rent and to freeze mortgage payments and to end utility. to cancel rent and to freeze mortgage payments and to end utility shut-offs. It went on for about an hour and a half, and then some people stayed and some people left to come to this meeting. Just to give you a small idea of how dedicated some people in this community are to actually protecting people and making sure that they have, you know, heat to cook their food and water to bathe, especially like in a public health crisis. Honestly, I wish some of you were there or would show up to more of these things because then maybe we wouldn't have to come here and have so much to say in five minutes. I wish you would have responded to my emails when I started coming to these meetings in April. You didn't respond then. The only time you really respond to my comments now is like when you interrupt me or when Bill Colbrook wants to point out that I mentioned that I am going to take up the five minutes because, again, this is the only time we get to talk to you. And like Benjamin pointed out, we don't know if we get three minutes or five minutes. It's not very clear, consistent. This is my only time to talk to you, only time that you'll listen, only time I'm getting a semi-acknowledgement from you. So I'm going to take up that five minutes. Anyway, tone policing usually does happen to people who identify as women, those who are unafraid to show emotion. I would say that two of those, those describe me. I'm grateful for Grace for pointing that out. I'm grateful, um, yeah, I am grateful that Bill Colbrook pointed out that someone would keep talking, take up your time. I will do that because it's never a sure thing. It's because of how much time you take up of ours. If Tracy and Chris, of Tracy and Tris's time with made-up FOIA charges that they have to research to make sure that they're legal, which they're not. With Alan, who keeps coming to you to ask you to pass a local moratorium to end utility shut-offs, to deem doing so a public health crisis. I like Benjamin's point again about showing faces. We can't show ours because of the Zoom bombing that happened months ago, which when public input participation was at its highest, I would say, when the most people were tuning in, that's when outside Zoom bombing was happening. So maybe reconsider trying that again so that we can also show our faces. Maybe that will end some of the animosity or some of the miscommunications or whatever. I, I, I think that that's will, that's something to try again, especially if you don't know when you're going to have in-person meetings again. I am grateful to all of the other people of the community that show up and do public comment. This isn't our, we don't get paid for this. This isn't our job. We just sincerely care about our neighbors and the people that live here. I really appreciated what Austin said about Indigenous Peoples' Day and how they prefaced about the land that we are on right now, and that's something that we should always keep at the forefront of our minds. We are not on land that is ours. We are holding meetings and going on with our lives as if it's not a day to sit and acknowledge. So I'm just going to stop for a second and just let us remember that we are not governing, living, live. Don't cut me off. I'm just going to stop for a second and let us remember that we're not governing, living, working, or owning land on land that is ours. Anyway, um, did you follow up about the Visit Champagne County theft of By Black Chambana work? That's a very low-hanging fruit, as you all like to say, to show your solidarity with Black women, Black business owners, and to give that $10,000 to By Black Sham Bana. At least they include Urbana in the name. And it's, it's a startup. It started from nothing. She really deserves that acknowledgement of that work and not to just have it lifted and put on somebody else's website. She deserves that funding. She needs $15,000 to update her directory. Anyway, I know, do what is right, not what is always easy. Not just about By Black Shambana, but that is what I'm referencing right now. But yeah, do what's right, not what is always easy. I'm sure you have relationships with those women who presented last week, but it's time to forge new relationships, just like I know you all have relationships with the police or history as being police. And it's, it's time to forge new paths and forge new relationships and forge new ways. So when you come back with budget amendments and ordinances and reviewing that, just know that we want you to focus on defunding the police, and I'm going to end with that.
Okay, next up is Lena Andrews Walker.
Hi, good evening. It looks like it's working okay, so I'm guessing you can hear me. Thank you. Yeah, I have a couple of things to bring up. First of all, I guess I'd just like to, to really say I agree with what Megan just said about the need to forge new pathways and define new ways to do things. That really speaks to a lot of the input I'd like to give tonight, especially regarding the presentation about the budget that we just saw. So a couple of things, you know, with the COVID situation, we are definitely going to be getting into a stressful time for all of us and trying to figure out how to maintain services. Even the most essential services is undoubtedly going to be, you know, a hefty task for everybody that works at the city. However, I, I really want to stress that, you know, as we get into this beginning of the new budget process, that there are still a lot of community concerns and a lot of frankly, community outrage over budgeting for the police. And cutting services for the community while continuing to fund the police at their current level is not really being there for the community, which was stated, I believe by Mayor Marlin or maybe Elizabeth during that presentation, is being absolutely something that has to happen on the part of the city, that the city really needs to show up for the community in this time. Also kind of to that point, thinking about, you know, seeing where the next six months to a year goes, but thinking about further on years down the line as the fund drops and there may be the need to cut services. I really hope that the city council has a plan for keeping the community as informed as possible about that situation so that the community can take a proactive rather than a reactive stance if there is any possibility that whatever services are available now may be cut or even removed permanently. I have a lot of concerns just watching this sort of basic presentation already that there seems to be a lot of built-in assumptions that there's going to be some kind of relatively recognizable stability in the next five or six years. And I, I just want and hope that the council will consider the possibility that that is not going to be the case for any of us. I mean, we're going to be facing increasing disruptions through climate change and all of the weather disruptions that that will bring. That means we're going to have colder winters. It means we're going to have hotter summers. We're going to have more and more people at serious risk for having negative health effects or, excuse me, very possibly dying from climate events. And what we're seeing already now with utility shut-offs gives me a lot of concern for how the community is going to get enough behind in that situation. So I don't know what the plan is going to be for that, but I look forward to learning more about it. And I hope that the community is kept abreast of any possible cuts to services that are going to be happening. There's also a lot of opportunities that we could have here for participatory budgeting and actually having the community be more involved in the budgeting process. I would love to hear what the city's plans are for something along those lines. That would be great. Kind of going back to what it means to be there for the community. You know, there's, I heard a lot of emphasis on economic development and needing to support small businesses. But if the people in this community don't have any money to spend because of an ongoing economic crisis, I, I don't quite see how that plan is going to pan out. And while local businesses are very good and important, you know, there is a whole community of people behind the people that start those businesses. How are they able to get those businesses off the ground? If everybody's getting squeezed except for a lucky handful of people, or I should say a privileged handful of people, because it's not luck, it's a deliberate systemic process that allows some people to be winners and some people to be losers in our economic system. It's just not going to happen. We're not going to have a resilient community going forward. So these are all things that I really hope that the city council is thinking about. I know I'm thinking about them. And I know that I'm, a lot of the people that I'm talking to in the community are thinking about them. And so we are ready to show up and do what we need to do to support each other. And so I hope that you're ready to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Justin Hendricks.
Hello, can you all hear me? Hello, everyone. My name is Justin Michael Hendricks. I'm a Parkland College student, Champagne Urbana resident. Honoring the lands we are living on that's been stolen from indigenous lives, I believe would have been great to open this meeting with saying that, or at least in closing. Thank you, Megan, for the moment of silence. Austin gave you the history lesson, offering tools to teach and reach those. Let's act accordingly, council. Thank you all who attended the Hidden Homeboy Coming Out Celebration. It was great to see the community can create safe spaces in the streets for Black and Brown bodies, even LGBTQ livelihoods as well, before the city may do. It is my hope the cities of Urbana and Champagne will soon create safe havens and spaces for us all. Diane, I hope you enjoyed the views from Facebook Live. Hopefully, our next event, we will see an attendance from you all, like when you back the blue clues or the black, or the crazy Smurfs at the Black to Blue, at the Back the Blue Ceremony. Speaking of defunding the police and policing schools, it's a pandemic, and I see families without technology and Wi-Fi still. Schools aren't being patrolled. Give me the loot and give my babies what they need instead of policing children in schools that are empty. Let's uplift them academically while they're at home in a pandemic. Stop the evictions and the shut-offs, plus the mind frame that humanity is a huge political move. It's not. Tomorrow, Leah Lewis will be facing an unjust system once again. As we gather tomorrow, will any of you join us? I believe it will be rewarding to see civic engagement firsthand. Is anybody up for communicating with her as she arrives or departs from the courthouse? Still waiting on Ms. Chong's findings to be taken into account. Still need those priors mentioned on the previous cops, plus how their weight and their height wasn't taken into account still. Let's at least not silence the facts now because our voices are close to being silenced next. Drop the charges and change the rules because obviously the cops are the ones that need to be charged personally. Including, we need to also find out about the youth who are silenced right now during the pandemic in the justice system. Are they being tested and treated for COVID during this pandemic? We don't know the numbers, but I'm pretty sure the Health Department does if they need to. Thank you all again, and let's be reminded that today is Indigenous People Day. And the four founding fathers, plus Columbus, were nothing but rapists, killers, thieves, and more. And that includes Thomas Jefferson too, who raped and abused a young Black girl for years. Support Hidden Homeboy. We still have a pantry in Champagne located at the city building, and we have our second one currently under construction. I'm proud of Marshall doing the civic engagement and creating the People's First Approach with his pantries and clothing closet coming soon. In clothing to give, in closing to give a response to the letter last week that was very long-winded in white fragility. As a Black Big Mama once said, "If you can't take the heat, child, get your behind out of my kitchen. My city is hungry, and I'm trying to feed them, furnish and fashion them. Your number is up. The people's mayor is out." Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Eddie Pratt Jr.
Hello, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, okay. First off, I want to, I want to start by saying that we should definitely take the time to honor those whose land was stolen in which we live and work and grow our crops and guide our generations on. There's something to be said about that. So I'll take a second, just as Megan did earlier, show those people their proper respect. Okay, so no shut-offs, no unshut-offs. It appears to me from some information that came across that this council actually has a bit of power to stop these shut-offs, at least here locally. As leaders of this community, it falls on you guys to help protect the people in which you serve. And I pray that you will do exactly that. Funding the police at this point seems kind of ridiculous. A bipartisan pardon, partnership to build a new jail just to fill bodies, mostly brown and Black bodies and that. It's not actually going to solve any problems. As a matter of fact, with COVID and the lessening of opportunities, we have seen, we have seen violent crime rise. We've seen shootings rise. I'm not sure if you understand the, the equation of which, how you get crime, but it's desperation plus need. And when that happens, people are going to do what they have to do. Now, if you add that on to people's utilities being cut off in the midst of this pandemic, all you will see is crime rising. If we're going to allocate funds anywhere, that's allocated into our school systems, that's allocated into more trade programs. These things will actually curb crime because people don't commit crimes for no reason. They commit crimes because they feel they have no alternative. So we should create those alternatives. One of the bright spots that I've seen is the SWIFT program in Parkland. And that was a great opportunity, though very small and limited in size. I think it was only 200 people could get into it. Perhaps we should throw funding into that program and extend those numbers, if we can double those numbers. These things, along with other ways, we can actually create a safer, more prosperity in the community that we all live in. Another thing, just as it was, it was mentioned, Leah Lewis goes another round against a white supremacist-made and upheld system tomorrow morning. I can't help but to think about that guy, that police sympathizer, that red pickup truck who attempted to run over over a dozen people who were there fighting for human rights and how they know who he is, know what he drives, has his license plate number. And it's a clear crime, but nothing happens. But yet, arrest a Black woman who you can't actually say was a part of a crime, but just present in proximity to one. And yet, she has all these charges. She has to go through all of this mucky water that we call a court system. And for what? Why do we have to deal with this? We shouldn't. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Christopher Hansen.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Sorry about that earlier, and thanks for coming back to me. My name's Christopher Hansen. I live in Urbana. I continue to be amazed watching the Urbana City Council kind of blindly follow the advice of, of our city legal department. There have been so many situations now where, you know, Kirk Borman, James Simon, and others are just obviously lying. And I don't, I just don't quite understand why we're, we're dancing around the obvious truth there. It seems to me the result of this is that, you know, in, in the future, whether it's you or different people who are on the council, that cohort in the future is going to be stuck with these city staffers who are not doing or advising what is good for the city of Urbana and the people of Urbana. We kind of saw this last week, right? I mean, I, I watched as, you know, Jared Miller, Bill Brown, Mary Alice Wu, all, all tried to kind of ask James Simon and Kirk Borman about, you know, recurrent request for fees. And it looked, looked like the three of you were getting, you know, kind of frustrated at the, at the bad answers, the false answers, the dishonest answers that Kirk Borman and James Simon were, you know, at the bad answers, the false answers, the dishonest answers that Kirk Borman and James Simon, you know, put in your direction. And I guess what I'd like to say about that is, well, now you know what what I feel like and, you know, what Tracy Chong feels like and what other Urbana city residents feel like when we're trying to, you know, approach the city and ask for public records or whatever it is we're doing. Because we get the same treatment. It's always dishonest, and it's always bad for the public. But it should be abundantly clear that, you know, James Simon and the city legal staff are giving bad information at this point. And this is also the case with these speech limitations that you're contemplating now. Restricting free speech has never resulted in anything good. I think you know that. I think, you know, for what's already been done and what you're planning to do in the future, the city's going to be sued. It's going to waste a lot of resources, and the city is going to end up paying attorney's fees for the other side. And I guess what's really curious to me is, okay, so we had this meeting on September 14th, and Mayor Marlin decided independently that it was going to be a three limit time per person and one hour maximum. And there were going to be all these content-based restrictions on speech, and she just went and did this without consulting, you know, anyone on the council, as far as I could tell. And so my question is, and I hope you'll contemplate this tonight as you look at this ordinance, why are you bothering to consider an ordinance? If the mayor, if the chair can just decide on their own to do this whenever they please, what's the point of passing an ordinance? Why does Marlin need this? I don't understand the purpose. James Simon wrote a letter to the Illinois Attorney General explaining that everything Marlin did was entirely within her power. So why the ordinance? What's the point? I hope someone will answer that question tonight. And I'm still waiting on an apology from Diane Marlin and Kirk Borman and James Simon about, you know, when they decided to try and scam Urbana residents on FOIA fees. That's been pretty pretty clearly drawn out, and it's pretty obvious what happened there. So I don't understand why we're speaking so nonchalantly about, you know, conspiring to scam Urbana residents out of thousands of dollars in fees that were entirely illegal. We talk about it like it was just some slight error, but, I mean, you guys planned to do this, and it was wrong, and it's clearly wrong. It's been demonstrated to everyone that it was wrong. So does our city have any, you know, set of values? Do we have any morals or ethics, or do we just do whatever? Yeah, that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Okay, next up is Rita Connerly.
Good evening. My name is Rita Connerly, and I am a citizen of Champaign. I'd like to thank Alan and support him in the no amaranth shut off. Tracy Chong each week for calling in, challenging the internal investigation that you guys say was an external or outside agency. Stop playing victim. You created toxicity throughout your workplace with your unethical practices. Benjamin Stone, I support you in filing a complaint against the city for their violation in the Open Meeting Act for turning their cameras off. We've seen in other places where they'll buy shopping via Amazon and not really paying attention to public comment. Austin, thank you for acknowledging Indigenous Peoples' Day. Grace, for your supportive data about other cities' public comment and how that could affect our city and how they are trying to govern that. Megan, each week you call. Continue to call and use your five minutes. Thank you for supporting Aliyah Lewis. Thank you for speaking out for the greater good of all people. Lena, thank you for questioning the budgets that are not reflective of what I think a caring city is, not one that is showing their concern for our most vulnerable populations of people. Justin, thank you for your leadership. It is for your public, it is reasons like your public comment why we call you the people's mayor. Eddie, thank you for speaking on what defund the police means. Austin, I'm sorry, Chris, thank you for revealing the corruption and exposing the contradiction each week. Thank you for each of the public commenters who have spoke out. You city are making your environments toxic for your staff. We as elected, or you are as elected officials, have to be expecting of citizens' concerns. We are concerned. We know that Aliyah goes to court tomorrow. We need to support her. Why are you trying to jail her? We need to provide her with the supportive resources that will help her recover from the trauma that your officers created. Drop the charges. My children have witnessed this video that has gone viral. I have a 14-year-old daughter that'd like to speak about what she's seen.
Hi. Hi, I'm Rita Connerly's daughter. My name's Loyal Allen. I'm 14 years old, and I go to Central High School. I'm a freshman. So I heard about this incident of dumb on me, like sunny sensitive. And I seen it on YouTube, and I watched it. And there was this black, black young woman getting beaten in her stomach by the police, and it was on video, which is sad. It's sad to know that the police was white and like beating on her, which isn't fair because if she was white, she wouldn't get the same treatment as her, which is shown. So it's not my opinion. It's shown clearly. I don't think it's fair that she's been charged with something that he put onto himself because I don't think that she would have acted out of her, like, turn if he would have just been respectful about it and would have just, I guess he was doing according to his job, but if he was doing a correct job, then we wouldn't have to be dealing with what we're dealing with now. And I think that she should be treated as if a white woman would get this, and everybody should be treated equally. So somebody shouldn't be greater than the other. It shouldn't be like queens and kings and and the poor, whatever. It shouldn't be like that. Everybody should be equal. Right now, I'm, me and my younger sisters, they're 11 and eight and nine. We're doing plates for the homeless, and we're going to go give them out right now. We're going downtown to the homeless shelter, and we're giving out food. So we made them tacos for tonight.
So please listen because we're listening. Thank you.
Thank you. And last up is Sarah Nixon.
My name is Sarah Nixon. I've been a resident of Urbana for over a decade, and I wish to address agenda item F2B, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 2, Addition of Section 2-5, authorizing presiding meeting officers to effectively intimidate members of the public by empowering the officers to issue, quote, verbal warnings to speakers whose language they unilaterally deem to be, quote, abusive, harassing, threatening, or defamatory, and to silence speakers during public input by summarily muting their microphones, all while doing so without even defining those terms and thus assigning unchecked power that can be used as a bludgeon with which to silence negative public comment that you deem unwelcome. We, the community, have already seen members of the public bullied and abused in a similar manner at city council meetings lately and other city commission meetings, admonished and silenced in clear violation of the Open Meetings Act and the First Amendment simply for offenses such as uttering someone's name or while attempting to articulate a criticism or a series of criticisms. In every case of this silencing that I have witnessed, a reasonable person would likely have found that the speaker was legitimately and civilly attempting to articulate valid points regarding issues relevant to city government. It is appalling to note that city administration jumped into action on this issue, rushing through an unconscionable maneuver to silence its critics and producing at the snap of a finger an ordinance amendment to put through the voting process, yet is still dragging its heels, looking the other way, hiding its head in the sand with regard to Urbana Police brutality victim Aliyah Lewis. It is nothing less than an outrageous display of hypocrisy on parade for the mayor and most of the city council to be creating as an urgent priority issue, an amendment to censor public criticism of the administration whilst it has now been whilst it has now been six months of silence and inaction from city leadership since UPD officers violently assaulted Ms. Lewis, an innocent individual in the street without cause, a domestic violence survivor and crime witness upon whom they intentionally inflicted physical injury and extreme anguish while verbally harassing and abusing her, escalating her already severe trauma, disorientation, and distress, and which actions were calculated and guaranteed to trigger in the young woman a physical self-defense reaction, which in turn enabled the officers to falsely cry victim, falsely claim that she had resisted arrest, had assaulted an officer, and thus creating a very convenient smokescreen against their own misconduct, and then further abusing her by initiating prosecution against her, thereby continuing to manipulate public perception against Aliyah and continuing to ensure her ongoing escalating trauma with her being subjected to yet more abusive courtroom proceedings tomorrow morning. Where is the ordinance amendment that addresses this atrocity, Mayor Marlin? This is the real problem, not criticism from the community during public input. The real problem here is that elected leaders in Urbana have the gall to blame citizens upset by your own actions and inactions as you carry on doing nothing whatsoever in the face of clear and convincing evidence of police brutality and misconduct. And so predictably, week after week, your shocked constituents express their outrage only to find themselves now targeted by the thought police. You have generated an absurd dysfunctional merry-go-round. Clearly, city council and the mayor know how to act, know how to take notice of problems, know how to generate responses to them, and know how to get things done, but choose not to when it comes to their most vulnerable and victimized constituents and the problems they face. So Chief Seraphin and Julia Ritz continue on their merry ways pursuing their white supremacist policing and prosecuting regime without a murmur from the mayor and most of our city council. Make no mistake, they will have to answer one day to their maker ultimately, if not to the electorate. And your inaction and your cast at support of the harm they are doing will not be forgotten either. 2020 is a year in which history is being made, and you are writing your own shameful chapter into it. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Okay, that concludes public comment. We'll move on to unfinished business. There is none. Reports of standing committees, Councilmember Woo.
How should we handle the resolutions that came forward with no recommendation?
They would be, I believe we need a motion and a second. Is that correct, Jim?
Yes. They're handled no differently than any other resolution that comes before the council through the committee of the whole.
And is Bill Colbrook back on Zoom? He lost internet for a while. It looks like he is.
Yes, I am, but I'm still trying to get situated here, though.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so correct me if I'm wrong. I think that we have two no recommendation ones. So to begin with, on Resolution Number 202009046R, Resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a community partnership agreement with Visit Champaign County for fiscal year 2020 and 2021, the committee made no recommendation.
Mary Alice, Jane DeLuce is here and would like to address the council. Go ahead, Jane.
Well, she was here.
Yeah, I'm here. Okay, thank you. Our mission at Visit Champaign County is to create a sense of place for our community and to tell that story to visitors and potential residents. One of many aspects of what we do is to maintain over 2,000 tourism-related listings on our website and in the guide. As a primarily public-funded 501(c)(6) organization, all tourism-related businesses receive a complimentary web and guide listing in categories such as restaurants, retail, attractions, hotels, parks, facilities, and event-related businesses such as florists, photographers, DJs, audiovisual, etc. Business updates for our website and digital guide happen every day, especially during the pandemic, and we compile those listings through, one, direct communication with businesses, two, annual cross-checking with the CU Public Health District, three, business announcements through News Gazette, Smile Politely, ChambannaMoms.com, etc., four, updates from area chambers of commerce, the Economic Development Corporation, the Urbana Business Association, Champaign Center Partnership, and more, and five, staff research on Facebook and other social media sites, as well as Google, Yelp, TripAdvisor. We have promoted Black-owned businesses for many years through our web and guide listings, through social media posts, through business spotlight videos, featured articles in the guide, restaurant week participation, online blogs, catered events, and more. This summer, in response to social unrest, we wanted to highlight our existing Black-owned business listings on a new webpage. So now these businesses are listed twice through the new webpage and their original listing category, which we've had for years, such as restaurants, retail, and more. The majority of our tourism-related Black-owned business listings have been on our site for years. Additional research was done to include more recent businesses associated with event planning. So we looked at multiple resources, including By Black Shambana. We support By Black Shambana through promoting and personally attending their events, including 217 Black Restaurant Weekend, Urban Market Pop-Up Shop, along with the invitation to promote their paid directory business at our recent board meeting. We've also invited them to participate in our Diversity and Inclusion Marketing Council, and most recently, to be a part of a very exciting project centered around creating Black history murals as part of a larger concept and creating an African-American culture and heritage trail. We met with By Black Shambana this morning and look forward to a shared understanding of our missions and where they converge with the collective goal to support Black-owned businesses and other avenues for making our community more inclusive and welcoming.
Any questions for Jane? Mary Alice.
Jane, thank you for that background. I'm wondering if you can provide a bit of background in terms of how, it sounds to me like you have multiple different avenues for gathering information and publishing the information. And so if you could provide any information in terms of some of the links that you were able to get from By Black Bama, is that the right phrase?
By Black Shambana, correct.
Yes, yes, thank you.
There, I believe there were two DJ listings that we weren't aware of, and so we were able to utilize that listing. We try to keep up with businesses. The hard part about businesses, especially ones that are not brick and mortar necessarily, are hard to know which ones are open and which ones are maybe not in business anymore. And so we always try to check our resources when we do new listings. And in creating this page, we wanted to make sure that it listed the tourism-related businesses. And so looking, we looked at Google, we've looked at Facebook. Like I mentioned before, we check with Chamber of Commerce, different chambers of commerce and what they're doing. And those are our different resources of how we all utilize each other's listings and further promote these businesses. So it gives them an extra opportunity to be promoted through our page as well as By Black Shambana and other resources.
So do you give credit on your webpage in terms of where you So do you give credit on your webpage in terms of where you find these resources?
Not with the two thousand listings that we have now. It's, I mean, I think anyone, if you look at listings that are used in a directory of any sort. They can be pulled from a lot of different places. So if a new restaurant opens or a new retail store opens. We get the listing just like anyone else does to be able to add to our site. Like I said, it can come from a lot of times Google, sometimes Yelp, sometimes TripAdvisor. A lot of times contacting the business directly. And if it's a new business, we welcome them and ask them if there's anything that they need. And let them know that they're going to have a complimentary, complimentary listing in our materials.
So I'm just, there's, there's different cultivated lists right out there. You mentioned Shambana Moms as one of the lists also out there. It would seem to me like it would be appropriate if there are active groups in our. Community to be able to give them at least someplace on the website where you acknowledge that they're the ones who kind of gathered that information. You're just helping them promote it. Does that make sense?
It does. What we do on our website is list who our partners are, our affiliate partners and just say, we enjoy working with all of them. I think we have to remember that these are business listings, so the listing doesn't belong to any of us. It belongs to that business. And what a great way that we can all give them additional opportunities to be promoted. So it's not from any one place. So there's not, it's, there's no proprietary ownership of any type of listing. It can be used anywhere on the internet.
Sure, sure. I mean, I recognize that you get a lot of information from a lot of different sources. I just think in terms of community and building community trust and promotion, I think it would be. Good to be able to at least credit some of the different resources that other people are actively trying to, you know, call and, and provide to the community. So that's my two cents.
Absolutely. And if we do a blog, let's say a new business is open. And Shambana Moms is featuring them or By Black Shambana is featuring them. In our blog, we would definitely credit and say, hey, that grand opening was done. The ribbon cutting was done by. The Black Chamber of Commerce or By Black Shambana or the Champagne County Chamber of Commerce, whoever it was. But listings themselves would be, that would be, it's, there's just too many places that that comes from, if that, if that makes sense.
Jared.
Jane, could you talk about your relationship with Mariah? Obviously, the statement you've given was a prepared remark about the incident, but didn't directly address what went on with. You inviting her to the event and then shortly thereafter, somewhere in the timeframe of. Her and you developing a relationship, bringing that new thing onto the, onto the website, promoting black businesses. Can you talk about that timeline a little bit?
We've known each other for, oh gosh, I guess probably close to a year. And so anytime that she's had an event, we've promoted it and we've talked to her about her events. When there was some efforts to talk about shop local CU, we've had conversations with multiple organizations. Let's see what else. And I thought at the time for the board meeting that it was a great way. To bring By Black Shambana and the Black Chamber of Commerce, Black Champagne County Black Chamber of Commerce. To talk to our board as we do invite guest speakers to every board meeting. To talk about the efforts that are being done to support black owned businesses. Like I said, at the end of the statement, we met this morning and talked about ways that we can. Further converge on our missions and be able to move relationships forward.
You don't. I mean, I don't know, the timing of it all just seems, just seems. I don't know, seems, seems, seems a bit off and. We haven't gotten a chance to hear from, from Mariah about this either. So we're only hearing one, one side of the story. And I really think that this isn't just for you, Jane. This is for council, but I really think that council needs to. Be provided an opportunity to hear from her as well before we make our decision.
Any other council comments, questions? I'll turn it back to you, Mary Alice. You're muted.
Excuse me. So Jim, if you're still there on behalf of the committee, do I need to move approval or not approval? I'm still unclear on what I'm supposed to do.
That's up to you. You either move approval if you want. If you don't, maybe somebody else will move approval. It doesn't necessarily require the chair to move approval. But my recommendation would be to move approval, see if there's a second and then there'll be a vote or discussion and a vote.
Okay.
You're not, as chair, you're not required to move approval.
All right, well, then I guess I will put this back on the floor for discussion. And to that end, I'll move approval resolution number twenty twenty zero nine zero four four six R.
A second.
Discussion. Jared.
Just one more question from Jane. Did you just, Jane, did you discuss with Mariah becoming a supporter of By Black Shambana? If VCC would support via paying supporter of their, of their efforts?
We asked, we talked about developing a partnership and what that could look like. So she was going to write down what she thought would be great for a partnership. And then we're going to discuss that next week.
Was that something you would consider?
We work with partnerships with all sorts of groups in our community. So absolutely.
You guys actually give money to folks?
Partnerships are defined in a lot of ways, so it will, it could. Involve a lot of different avenues for that. We have to remember we're a public facing organization, just as you are representing the city of Urbana. And that is a for-profit business. So we would have to look and say, what, what does this partnership look like? In terms of moving forward, any kinds of efforts to work together or continue working together.
Well, I mean, VCC says they support black businesses and this is a black business promoting black businesses. It seems like a no-brainer, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, my other comment is just to counsel. I guess, you know. I know. We have a decision to make. We have a motion to approve it. I don't think that we should. At least not until we've had a chance to hear from the gal from By Black Shambana about what. What their story is. And if they did have a discussion this morning about it, then, you know, maybe there's. There's no issue and they will let us know that. But until we have gotten that, I don't think that we should be voting on this at this time. And I know Sharice said something to that effect in her email.
Actually, Sharice's email states she would like more clarification on VCC Black Shambana issue. If that's clarified, I think we should give them the money because we have an agreement to do so and it's budgeted.
Yes, then it will be a question of whether or not we have clarification. And I don't think that we do until we've gotten to hear from By Black Shambana. That would be, that's just my opinion. Thanks.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Dennis.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment as well. I did defer a discussion on Visit Champagne. Two weeks ago, and it's not because I don't support the mission and the good work of VCC or yourself, Jane. But I did want to make a point that as we are supporting the county in its efforts to. Represent itself to the community and increase financial. Commerce in our community, that I'm also had a great concern that we as a city support. Our own business district and the Urbana Business Association. So we haven't had those kinds of conversations yet. But I, I'm sure that city council is going to support our local businesses as it can. And that's a separate issue from Visit Champagne County. I don't personally have any interest in getting into the. Nitpicking the, the individual interactions that Visit Champagne County has with one of its members, which might be a new member. I don't think it's really the business of the city council to. Make some kind of judgment over the, the business operation of this corporation that we're looking at. Rather than I think that we should use them as a resource which they're offering. And we have a seat at their board, which I think is appropriate. And we've all said that we'd like to see more images of Urbana. Visible, you know, as in the advertising and especially in the videos that are posted. But again, I'm not going to nitpick every aspect of their program. So I'm just saying that I'm, I'm willing to support our funding for them for this year. Because I think in the long run, it's the best and most useful thing that we can do at this time.
Any other comments? Bill Colbrook?
Yes, and thanks you, thanks everybody for being patient with me as I dealt with some internet issues here and I'm back on. I believe that the, the explanation that was given was appropriate. I mean, I understand that it's possible to wait even longer to get, to get further explanation. But also we, we did defer this from a couple of weeks ago. And what I've heard from VCC is they've got Urbana's interest in mind. And I think sometimes we just have to go by a little bit of faith and trust what they say and, and move forward. I think we could probably banter this back and forth for quite a while until we get, you know, every little minutia addressed. But I think it's time to move forward and I intend to support it.
Any other comments? Mary Alice.
Just to speak a little bit to what Jared was talking about. The best of my knowledge, city council and city staff and Diane or Carol, correct me if I'm wrong. We've not received any information from Moira either in writing or a phone call or. Have we had any communication that she's been concerned?
I've had no communication.
I'm unaware of any staff communication.
I mean, this is, as Bill Colbrook said, this has been on the agenda for quite some time. So I feel like if there were concerns from other community members, aside from the public certainly talked about it about two weeks ago. We would have heard from, from different people as well and specifically from Moira. So I'm, I'm willing to support it at this time.
Any other comments? Are we ready to vote? Bill Brown, did you want to comment?
I made some comments last week. I don't really have anything new. I agree that if somebody else had wanted to contact us about that issue, they would have. I think the explanation is clear. It's a separate entity, business entity and their main value in their. In their listing is promoting the listing themselves. It's not the, the members on the listing. So. You know, that's something that VCC is willing to help with. So I think there's potential for a good partnership there. I think we need to just go ahead and go forward with our support.
Okay, Jared.
I know we're not usually taking public comments on this, but I think Justin Hendricks is actually with Mariah from By Black Shambana.
I think we're ready to vote on this. And we'll, we'll follow up with further information, but we really need to vote on this tonight. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Brown?
Yes.
Colbrook?
Yes.
Keller?
Absolutely not.
Roberts?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes. That motion passes. Thank you. Next up is ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero nine dash zero four nine. An ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Two, Edition of Section two dash five, Electronic Virtual Public Meetings. And this is brought forward from Committee of the Hall from the twenty first and the October first meeting. There's a memo in your packet along with the draft ordinance. And I just wanted to summarize. The changes that were made in the ordinance based on your comments from last week. So if you've got the ordinance in front of you, you can file, follow along. The first changes or amendments that were made were Section two dash five B one C. The language has been changed to quote, "Public comments shall be limited to no more than three minutes per person, period." Then a new sentence, "The public input portion of the meeting shall total no more than one hour. Unless otherwise shortened or extended by majority vote of the public body members present." So that was, the, the one sentence was split into two to clarify the time allowed per person plus the total amount of time allowed for public input. And then the amendment was to, instead of a two-thirds vote of the public body, a majority vote of the public body could extend the total amount of time allotted. And then on, on that same page, which is page three of the ordinance under invited presentations. The language was clarified to state that members of the public who are invited by the presiding officer. So the presiding officer is either the mayor chairing the city council meeting or council member chairing the committee of the whole meeting. The, when the members of the public are invited by the presiding officer to present on a specific topic, they'll be limited to speaking for no more than ten minutes. Unless that time is shortened or extended by a vote of the public body. And this distinguishes between members of the public being invited to give a presentation versus. Other people invited by staff to give a presentation related to a specific agenda item. So last week, you know, we had a presentation by the RPC on the Kickapoo Rail Trail. Other times we'll bring in, if there's a development agreement before us, we will have developers come in and talk or there may be other experts on certain topics. But this language refers to members of the public who are occasionally invited to present to city council. And we also clarified the language to make sure that when public body members, that would be council members or board or commission members who want to schedule such a presentation by a member of the public. You make, you have to coordinate that with the presiding officer. And then the presiding officer will schedule that with either the city administrator, if we're talking about a council or committee meeting. Or the staff liaison for the boards and commissions. And that's just to make sure that we have time on the agenda and we know that, that we need to fit that in. And then the, the third, third item on this memo refers to. A section two dash, section two, section, whoops, sorry. Section four, and it's section two dash twenty seven, Rules for Deliberation. And that was related to the motion to defer. And I originally included this as part of this ordinance because I wanted to try to translate. What's a very complicated paragraph into plainer English that was easier to understand. But in the attempt to repair this, we actually inadvertently altered it in meeting, in meaning. And then Bill Brown tried to fix that last week by eliminating one of the paragraph, one of the sentences and. Just for simplicity sake, I think I, I didn't think, I recommend that we revert back to the original language in the code. Not attempt to change anything related to that particular language at this point in time. So basically what this deferral rule states is that a city council agenda item that appears on the agenda for the first time. Can be deferred to the next regular meeting of the city council by a motion and a second with no discussion, no vote. And then as a safety valve, if the council doesn't want to wait until the next city council meeting, they can. Hold a special city council meeting before the date of the next regular meeting by a three-fourths vote. So we're just going to let that language stand. It will not. Nothing in the city code will change. And basically this ordinance will focus, I think, as, as you intended. nothing in the city code will change. And basically, this ordinance will focus, I think, as as you intended, on rules for public input related to remote meetings. And that's the ordinance you have before you tonight. And I did want to read emails that we received from council members Laut and Hersi. Charisse Hersi said she's good with the public input ordinance. Council member Julie Laut said she wanted to write and quote, "Let you know, I support passage of the proposed ordinance, creating rules for public input during remote meetings as amended during committee of the whole meeting last week. Thank you for your work on these new rules." And this also came to council with no recommendation. So we would need a meeting and a second to get this on the floor. Not we need a motion. We have a meeting. We need a motion and a second to get this on the floor. Wow. Mary Alice?
I'll go ahead and do that since I was committee chair. So ordinance number 2020-09-049, ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Two, Editions to Sections Two by Five, Electronic Virtual Public Meetings, I move approval.
And I will second it.
Okay. Discussion, Jared?
So I thought, you know, obviously, the will is there at the council to pass some of these rules. I'd still like to bring up a couple of things and maybe talk about compromise or somewhere we can meet in the middle, since I was on the opposite end, and most of you guys are in support of it as written. But I would still like to propose a couple of things and maybe see if there may be support for for that. First, first of which would be the two time issues. And the other one's more of a definitions thing, because I know that there's not probably going to be a striking of language the way that I would prefer. But anyway, Dennis and I had discussed possibly a compromise between my position being a little bit further and your guys' being a little bit shorter of maybe doing four minutes. And I proposed to pros to him one hour and 20 minutes of public input limitation that would give room for 25 people to speak at a given meeting. We don't usually exceed that volume, but I felt like it gave room for a little bit more, doesn't ask for too much more time, 20 more minutes, and one more minute per person to allow folks a little bit more time to get their get their complete thoughts out, because it's not always easy to do in three minutes. So I figured I'd let's start. Let's start with that, and I'll ask about the definitions afterwards.
Dennis?
Yes. As as I was not present last week, I spent a good part of this afternoon listening to the entire city council meeting from last week. And it's big work. But one of the things that I thought would be a compromise would be, I mean, we're always talking about it's going to be five minutes, but we feel it's too long. Three minutes, people think, well, that's nice and brief, but this the community feels like they can barely get their thoughts in. So so I proposed four minutes. And I sent this proposal to all of the city council members individually and also the mayor. And I guess I got a pullback. And I found that two other individuals besides myself felt that four minutes could be a consideration. And three, three, three people thought that three minutes was appropriate. So if I join the two people who felt that four minutes was a considerable, a considerate compromise to this in this discussion. We would have basically I guess a tie for as far as the people who've responded to me. The only person I didn't hear from was Julie Loves. So Jared suggested that then if I'm going to do for, if I'm going to ask for four minutes, that he'd like to have a longer time. I guess I disagree. I think one hour of public input is plenty. And if we have four-minute public input limits, which it wouldn't have to take four minutes, but if it did take four minutes, that would be the limit. 15 individuals could speak during that time if they took all the time. Well, typically during our city council meetings, after the initial flood of public input, we have had fewer than 15 or fewer people. And tonight, we've had one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11 people speak. That comes within the parameters of a four-minute option. So I support four minutes. I think it gives the people a little more time to express themselves. But it it also doesn't make the discussion verbose and repetitive. So so I'm with Jared on four minutes. I'd like to, if we're going to have a discussion about this, I'll propose an amendment that that we make, we change the time slot to be four minutes per individual at these meetings, but not change the limitation of one hour maximum for a public presentation from the, you know, public access.
I'll support your motion, Dennis.
Is that you don't need to make a formal motion then?
Okay, well, I'll make a motion that we change the language to that section of the ordinance. Section 2-5, in parentheses, B, parentheses, 1C. Public comment shall be limited no more than four minutes per person. That's my recommendation.
So you're second for that?
I'd still support it.
That's Jared. So that's an amendment that is amending the original motion made by Mary Alice and Bill Colbrook. Further discussion on this amendment. Bill Colbrook?
Yeah, I just want to kind of disagree with some of the comments. I mean, the three minutes, we've debated this. We've we've kind of come to, you know, at least consensus, besides at least one member of the council, that three minutes up to this point has been appropriate time limit. I don't think that that three minutes has ever been characterized as nice and brief. I think three minutes is appropriate. And what three minutes gets us in an hour is 20 speakers. And we've heard over and over and over again from people in the public input, how energized and energetic people in our community are about wanting to address it. So I think it's more important to get 20 people in that hour as opposed to 15. So I would I would not be in support of changing it to four minutes, and I would be in support of passing it as is, as written.
Any other comment? Mary Alice?
Um, so I kind of agree with Dennis. I think it would be nice to have a compromise here. I I also feel pretty strongly about the hour. I think the hour is roughly is just slightly under a third of our meeting. Um, in in order for us to get business done, I would encourage people to to only take the amount of time they need to actually give their their feedback. So that, you know, if people only need two minutes and you have you have some leftover time that you can have more people give input. I did have a question about how this works in with the, and I'm sorry for not bringing those up earlier. How this works out with the emails is the, because we don't talk about the emails that are emailed for public input. We've been reading out the names of people who have sent in public input. Does and this doesn't cover it. So I don't know how the how the emails factor into this. Diane, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, but it does. Let me give you the background here. I think an hour of public of in virtual public input, not including listing off emails that people write and and tell us. So I don't.
Yeah, the the hour refers to verbal public input and then emails will be listed by names of the people, but that won't won't count against the hour. Okay. But we will not be reading emails allowed into the record. But the emails sent for public input for the meeting will be incorporated into the meeting record, the minutes. Bill?
Yeah, I support three minutes. I think tonight there were 12 members, 12 people that count that I counted that spoke, and I don't think over half of them spoke on the agenda item. So I think if we did have an agenda item that people were interested in speaking on, we probably have more than 15 people speaking. I do think our our limit is the appropriate time limit for total. For virtual meetings, I think that that's appropriate. And I do think we've compromised and made some improvements over the past few weeks. One was to change the language so that only the presiding officer would make the initial determination about if like if it became abusive. One with another one was just to make it apply to virtual meetings only. So I think it's been a give and take, and I think we've arrived at a good compromise the way it is. I support the way it is.
Any other comments on the motion for four minutes each one hour total? Okay, so let's let's vote on that first, and then we'll take it from there. Will the clerk please call the roll? And this is voting on the motion to go for four minutes per speaker, one hour maximum public input. Council member Brown?
No.
Colbrook?
No.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Woo? Yes. So it's three yeses for four minutes each one hour. Two noes. So the yeses have it. So it now will stand at four minutes each one hour total. And we go back to the original motion. Any discussion on that? Jared?
So I guess my discussion isn't another amendment. I would probably make one, but I don't think it'll be supported. But I really am concerned about not having clarifying language in the ordinance in relation to let's see, where is exactly the section two? Section 2-5. B1D, in order to maintain reasonable decorum in the meeting, presiding officer of the meeting should have the authority of a verbal warning, blah, blah. Two speaker uses abusive, harassing, threatening, or defamatory language, or who engages in disorderly conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of a meeting. I think that the that language is still very broad and can be interpreted in a lot of different ways, given the presiding officer. And I think that we need to establish particular rules about what those things mean in order to be clear to the public what the expectations are that the council has deemed are appropriate for giving public comments, because you know, there's it's just it's not, it's not defined. Those terms are not defined. They can be they're open to a lot of different kind of interpretation. And I really think that we're putting ourselves in a slippery situation for ourselves or future members of council to abuse the rules that are in there themselves, because we don't understand exactly what it is that they mean. And I'm still concerned about the fact that we're leaving that language so open in there like that without defining those things. And at least providing examples or something to say, this is what we expect. This is not what we expect. You know, for example, is calling somebody out in particular, saying that, hey, you know, Jared Miller said this last week, and I really don't think that he should have said that because of X, Y, and Z. Is that going to be considered abusive? Are we considering that abusive, or people are just going to find out on the fly as different chairs decide that? I'm still very concerned about about that language. I don't know what there is to be done about it, but I'd at least like to have a discussion about that.
Dennis?
Okay, so, you know, just as in the presidential debates, we don't like to see bullying. We don't like to see people, you know, in, you know, who are giving, you know, participating in public input here at the city council of bullying other individuals. It's a difference between bullying and calling people liars rather than you saying, I strongly disagree, and this is why. You know, and I take, you know, I take umbrage to the fact that you said that, and my point of view is this. So there's ways of of getting your message across that is civil. Still contentious, but civil. So I think that if we have a method in place where we first give a verbal warning to say, and then you can tell the person that please, please refrain from being using uncivil discourse during the meeting. We understand your feelings, but it's not appropriate. You know, you know, the city council met, you know, we're not, we're not here to have a brawl, a verbal brawl. We're here to express ourselves and understand each other's viewpoints. You know, that's a whole different thing. So there's like a line. And I think just the fact that we did, you know, in one instance, ask a person to please stop now, because, you know, you've crossed the line. I've noticed that in the last several weeks, people have been much more respectful in their commentary. So I think that it's an important thing to have limits. I kind of thought it was interesting that that to Carol Minton earlier last, last year, last week, I heard her say that even the school district, the school system expects their students to, you know, to discourse with among themselves with certain priority. And they have actually like a rule in the school district about speech in class. So we, you know, so it's not unusual to have this. And if if we were like in a Robert's Rules of Order thing, very, very particularly, you know, there would be, you know, the the leading individual, the chairman of the the discussion, you know, would have a mallet. It might even like bang the mallet and say, okay, that's enough of that, you know, if you want to continue to speak. You know, I'm going to bang the mallet, and you're going to be done if you keep this up. So I'm not, I don't have a problem with that, asking for civility. I don't think that we are intending to misuse it. But I, you know, and I don't want to make it so broad that we dampen, you know, truthful commentary. But I certainly don't want to hear people just being called liars without any kind of context or proof, except for an opinion. I mean, or maybe that's free speech. I don't know. But certainly is is not respectful free speech. There's a lot of other ways to say that you totally disagree with what I've just heard. That's my point of view.
Any other comments? Mary Alice?
So Jared, I think traditionally what happens in ordinances is there's a difference between council rules and ordinances. So I think that if we had some definitions, some examples, as you're talking about, I think the appropriate place to put those would be in council roles.
There, yeah, I there will be once this passes, we'll, we will rewrite the instructions that appear on every single agenda role, you know, for public input, and we can be very clear about, you know, and we can even provide examples. But one of the things we can be clear about is, you know, please address your comments to the council as a whole and in general, and and that sort of thing. So there will be some very specific rule or rules written for the agenda that will appear on every agenda that the public will have. Jim, you got a comment?
Let me expand the answers that have been given on Jared's question. Abusive. You can find the word in obviously the dictionary, and it means intended to demean, humiliate, mock, insult, or belittle. I think we heard a fair amount of that tonight. Here's harassing. In addition to prejudicial, it is hostile and intimidating language to try to force somebody to back down or change something. Defamation does have a legal definition. It's an untrue statement that is knowingly made and published to a third person where that third person relies on it. That's those are the elements of defamation. I've handled a number of defamation cases, and I've heard it at almost every single meeting. Free speech. Free speech. I believe council member Miller mentioned free speech. Public, courts have held that public input and the PAC has also held that public input is a limited public forum. It's not the courthouse steps or the steps of the city building where protesters are allowed to gather. It's a controlled environment. Limited public forums can be controlled, free speech in time, place, and manner. You just amended an ordinance that deals with time. The place obviously is the city council meeting. Lack of decorum and incivility is considered manner. And manner can be regulated. Courts have clearly held that. And one way that manner can be regulated is a public body has the legal right to regulate abusive speech, harassing speech, and defamatory speech. And in fact, that kind of conduct is technically not speech in terms of free speech. It's manner that is controlled. And so courts, including courts, federal courts in Illinois, excuse me, Illinois, have held that reasonable manner regulations are permitted. To give examples, treatises have been written on what examples are, and they are dealt with on a case by case basis. So that's, that's why those particular words were specifically chosen for this particular section, because they've been recognized by the courts.
And we can include those definitions in the written instructions that are listed on the agenda. And it's also important to note that public comment can also be made via email. And that in, in the rare occasion that someone is asked to, to stop and they don't, they will have the opportunity to finish their comments via email, and that will be included in the meeting record as well. Any other comments? Mary Alice? Unmute, please.
Sorry. I had a question following up on accommodations. So I did look at today's instructions for public input, and I didn't see anything in there. Maybe I missed it on how people who have disability that would, they would need an accommodation for weren't on, it was not included on there. So I just wanted to follow up on that.
It was included on, under the section on public input at very bottom of the page.
Okay.
Page two of the agenda. So it's still there.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure. It's not on the actual public input directions. Am I missing it?
Yeah, on the back page of the agenda, public inputs after email input, it's at the very bottom of the page. And that's usually where it is.
So there's actually a PDF up on the agenda, on the meeting minutes that has specifically public input. There's an actual document up there on the website, and it's not included on that. It's not included on that.
Okay.
At least what's currently up on the web. I'm just telling you, we just need to make sure that we consistently put where.
Good point. Okay. I just see it on mine, so I will make sure we'll follow up on that.
Thank you.
Sorry about. Bill?
Yeah, I think I support this as it is. The, I think the two, there's, there's going to be some differences, I think, between the way presiding officers enforce this, just like there are in everything, even when we were meeting in person and people went over the time limit now and then, some people would cut them off right away, some people wouldn't. So there's just going to be some differences. I didn't hear anything tonight that I thought I would have given a warning on. Maybe somebody would have gotten a warning from somebody else. But if, I, I think there's two checks. There's the warning that people can get if they're going, stepping over the line. And then the other check is whether the presiding officer decides to cut someone off or not, the council members can, if they decide to cut someone off, a council member can appeal the decision of the chair using Robert's Rules, and then we vote on it. If, if the, if the presiding offer, officer isn't doing anything, then you can call point of order and ask for the rules to be enforced. And if the presiding officer doesn't do anything, you can vote on it. So there's, and you know, Jim can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think those are the main checks on this. So it's not completely up to the presiding officer, but I think that there are enough checks and, and it'll be a little bit of a learning process, but I, I think it's already improved quite a bit.
Carol, did you want to speak? And then Jim?
Yeah, just along the lines of what Bill Brown was just describing, there's actually a section in Robert's Rules about when the members themselves get, become out of order. And, and the Robert's Rules doesn't speak directly to, to bodies that receive public testimony or public input. But I think it would be very easy to adapt what Bill was describing and make a clean process, which is that either the chair or the, or another member of the body says, I find the, the, again, it was, it was targeted around members. I find member Smith out of order. And so the, the, the chair can say that or a member of the body could say, I find them out of order. And then the chair says, shall I allow member Smith to continue? So you enlist the support of the body in, you know, either admonishing the person and cutting them off or allowing them to continue. And you can still, you know, say, or whoever makes the call could say what they're finding offensive and ask them to, you know, confine their comments to something or to stop making a reference to a particular individual or stop making accusatory remarks or something like that. I think there's kind of a clean way to do it. We just need to give people tools. And the mayor and I were talking earlier about how we might go about training the members of the boards and commissions to become comfortable with enforcing these rules or putting them into practice.
Jared?
So that, you know, brings up a question I brought up in many emails prior to this, on this issue in the Jack Waller recommendation from 2005 and how he had described how we deal with the general public input versus specific public input on items and how he had said that he would prefer that the city not ever put itself in a position of having to defend exactly what it is that we're proposing making rules of doing now. And that's, you know, you basically just ignore the person who you don't like hearing their comments of. The chair can walk out of the room, give the chair to the other presiding officer, and then come back when they're done and move on so that it can't be, there's no possibility of it being construed that someone is using the power of the chair to quiet someone because they don't like what they're, what they have to say, which is a content-based restriction, which are not allowed. And that's what all of this stems from. And I never got a response as to why we're moving away from a method that has been in place since then. And I don't know, maybe rulings have come out that have changed how the courts are seeing that, but I'm not aware of any, and I couldn't find any PAC rulings that made it seem like that, that was, that was a factor. So, you know, and again, you know, this is a, this was the thing I brought up before, and I'd bring it up again, not even just for lack of having uniform enforcement and opening ourselves up to lawsuits, because we're, you know, we really only get one kind of comments in this kind of meeting, and those are ones that are critical of us most of the time. And the only reason that this has even been brought up seems to be because people don't like the way that people are saying those things about it. And we're trying to come up with some creative language that allows us to say that, oh, well, these are manner-based restrictions and not content-based restrictions. But I have a feeling the way that this is going to end up getting applied, if people don't like what they're hearing, it's going to be because they don't like what they're hearing and not how they're hearing it. So that's why I'm asking for these things. And Jim, I never heard anything from you on, on that oh-five opinion from Jack as far as how you saw that and how it applies to what we're trying to do right now.
Jim?
I'd be happy to address that because I've years ago discussed it with Jack. First of all, it applied, the way it's written, it applies to in-person meetings. And actually, it allows any council member to walk out of the room if they don't like what they hear. Two, the kinds of comments that I've been hearing for months are vastly different than the kind of comments that have been posited in public comment. In early November, I will have been here eight years, and I have never heard the vituperative type comments at a public input that I've heard the last few months. Now, you are, as council members, you are put between a rock and a hard place by quote, walking out. How do people walk out in a remote meeting? They turn off their audio if they want, and they turn off their video if they want. And we heard concerns expressed by a number of people, or at least one or two people in the public, that they feel that that is discourteous. It's like turning your back on them. So how do you do it in a remote meeting? In fact, that same comment could apply to Jack's recommendations on how to handle abusive public comment. Walking out, I think there'll be members of the public who say, you know, how dare you ignore me by walking out of a meeting? So obviously, there's a call there. I can assure you, at least the cases that I've read and the PAC opinions, the two PAC opinions I've read that cite to a couple of key cases have indicated that issues of decorum, not what was said, not the, not the underlying substance of the message was said, but the manner is a manner, not a content issue. I agree with you, Jared, that it, there is a slippery slope. And when manner slides into comment, to say that Jared Miller is corrupt or deceptive or engages in a conspiracy to deceive or has fostered the theft of thousands of dollars from the public in, I don't know, rental registration fees, I'm making up a hypothetical. That's, that's not only manner, but that is clearly defamation because it imputes a crime on somebody. And when you impute a crime with the, with the tone and the rest of the comment, that suggests you got to prove it in court, but suggests malice. That means you, plaintiff, if they were to file an action, would not even have to prove actual damages, loss of money. They could get theoretically punitive damages or whatever, whatever the court awards or jury awards. Defamation's not protected any more than pornography is protected. I defy anyone to define pornography, and you'll get a thousand different definitions. And in fact, this famous line from a Supreme Court justice on pornography was, I can't defy it, but define it, but I know it when I see it. You're familiar with that one. And, and that's the same with the abuse, harassment, and defamation. But defamation does have a legal definition. So I, I'm not sure how to handle it any different than Jack without drawing criticism from the public about metaphorically turning your back, walking out, or going dark in a Zoom meeting.
This language, I also would point out, is very similar to what you see in many different municipalities around the state. So they have figured out how to do it, and we'll be working our way through it.
And that, that's why, that's why they've chosen the language, because the courts have vetted it.
Yes. Any other additional comments? Mary Alice?
I, I'd just like to echo a little bit about what Bill Brown had said. This, there was an original proposal from Diane on public comment. There was several things that have been altered. One of them was, we, we did change the number of things that we said the manner related to. Personal insults, I think, is one thing that was, was pulled out because it's content. We have Zoom meeting rules now because we live in a different world right now in terms of how to handle these things. There were questions tonight about why we're going through with this. Why are we doing it now when there were differences in terms of how public input was handled throughout this time of COVID? And my response to that is, is that we really need to give as clear, as clear rules to the public that they know what to expect. And to that, Jared, I agree, we need to have more information in terms of how we define some of these words. But we before had changes in the amount of time that we were giving to public input, some changes in the, it was very difficult to figure out if there was 20 people who are going to be speaking. How do you count the emails, et cetera? So, so my thought with this proposal is that, is it perfect? No. Are there going to be hiccups? Yes. But it gives a clearer definition to the public in terms of how public input will be taken during Zoom or other forms of electronic meetings. I fully expect that if there is something that the ACLU says this is a violation of freedom of speech, and you need to change your code, I fully expect that we will see an amendment or a change to the city code based on some of that feedback. So at this time, I mean, based on the number of conversations that I've had with people, both, both people who live in my ward and certainly with, with the city council members, at this time, I'm willing to support this.
Jared?
Well, I guess then I would just ask for, if we're going to put those rules forward in the council rules or public rules or wherever we post them for people to reference to them, that we make reference to whatever supporting legal rulings and things that Jim normally sends when he sends stuff to us along with those so that people can understand that we're not just saying that this is a thing that we're doing, that there are, here are legal reasons why we think that this is a thing we're able to do. And specifically because it's come up numerous times, I, I want to see what the arguments are for not being able to address council members or staff members individually. If it's done so in a manner in which the language is not abusive or any of those things, but they want to specifically address something that somebody said or something that somebody did, I don't see how that can be construed as a, as not being content-based. That sounds like what up? We're talking about someone specifically or addressing someone specifically? That is content. As long as you're not doing it in a way that's rude and, and terrible, then you should be able to address what folks have said. I mean, how else are we going to know what people are reacting to us? So if that's going to be included in the rules, I would really like to see that. But it should be for all of these things, for the abusive, whatever it is. We need to cite those things for the, for the public so that they know where our standing is.
Can include the citations and definitions.
Absolutely.
Are we ready to vote? All right. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Holbrook?
Yes.
Miller?
Nope.
Roberts?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you. And we'll have council rules pertaining to these new public input protocols with the agenda next week.
Move on to the next one, Diane?
Oh, yes, you're still chairing. Thank you. Got lost here.
On behalf of the committee, I move approval of ordinance number 2020-10053 and ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section Three hyphen forty-three, increasing the number of Class R and T one liquor licenses for Hickory River Urbana Incorporated, DBA Hickory, Hickory River Smokehouse at seventeen oh six North Cunningham Avenue.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Albrook?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wendy, you've muted yourself. But I'll vote yes.
Thank you.
That motion passes.
All right. On behalf of the committee, I move approval for ordinance number twenty. No, this one was not. Okay. Well, I, I will move approval of ordinance number 2020-10054, ordinance fixing the salary of city officers who are elected for a definite term of office from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four.
Yes, and I will add, we made the changes that the council amended, wanted to do last week. So for the first year, older person's salary would be, would remain the same as it is now, which is sixty-eight, seventy-eight. And then for the following three years, it's seven thousand dollars per year. And that's what is included in the ordinance before you.
I'm not sure if there was a second to my motion.
I'll do the second name then.
I apologize. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Brown?
Yes.
Albrook?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Mary Alice. Reports of special committees. I don't think there is any. Reports of officers. We do have an update from Carol Mitten and Chief Seraphin.
All right. Good evening. Just over a month ago, Hillard Hines came and presented their report and we're using that as a starting point for some changes and some ongoing review. So we were going to give an update tonight. And I will start with, there was, there's been some discussion with regards to the rifle safety in, involved in some of the, that was with Officer Ruff, back to the arrest on April tenth. That matter was referred back to Hillard Hines to at least say, hey, would you take a look at this? This was, I think it should be noticed, this piece, I guess, was outside of the original scope. They actually kicked it back to us as we believe this is a training issue. So I've assigned that to firearm staff for review and/or remedial training. So that, I just wanted to touch base with the council on where that particular issue stood. Speaking of training, one of the, or I guess a couple of the areas that have come up with regards to some of the recommendations with regards to the implicit bias and or de-escalation. So I'm going to speak to that right now, then specifically with regards to training. Generally speaking, there are two main areas where the Urbana police officers receive training. We usually have an annual in-service training, which is an eight-hour chunk of time, usually broken up into a couple of four-hour blocks. We initially had this scheduled for, in, that usually comes up in the springtime, but with the pandemic, we had postponed that in an effort to make sure we could do this under new pandemic rules. As a matter of fact, starting tomorrow, we'll begin the in-person instruction with our in-service training. That first block was the, will be on the classroom instruction. Some of that will be procedures and operations, things like evidence and processing and the updates of those issues. Some updates from the state's attorney's office. But the biggest chunk will actually be implicit bias training. And we'll actually have devoted two hours of time for that classroom block of instruction that will occur in October. The second four-hour block that the officers will receive will, is now currently scheduled for November. And that's actually where we're going to be prioritizing de-escalation training. And in that particular case, we're actually going to take, that's usually more hands-on scenario-based training. We're actually going to take a one hour of that to review the de-escalation techniques and have some actual classroom time there. We will then move and shift into three hours of scenario-based hands-on training. Where the officers will get an opportunity to, okay, take these techniques that we reviewed, this classroom, and we're going to actually use that for these scenarios and in some hands-on training. And how do we apply that and move forward in those areas? So that's coming up in November. With regards to the other big area outside of how we train officers in-house, and the nice thing about the in-house is that we get all of the officers trained. I won't say always a hundred percent, but all the officers can get to those based on how the scheduling works. The other area that we receive a lot of training is through the mobile training unit. States divided, you might have heard me say this into various regions, we're in mobile training unit twelve. And that, they actually, just last week reopened post-pandemic as well with some in-person in training. And I actually attended two classes, one class, police and minority relations, and another class on tactical de-escalation techniques. And in that particular, in those classes, it was actually the same instructor taught both days. Very solid instructor. Matter of fact, we've already had some conversations in-house about saying about whether we can bring him here to do something one-on-one typically when, excuse me, one-on the, for our, our officers and or perhaps others. Typically, when we have mobile training unit classes, it's sort of as we can manage the street, staffing, detective staffing and those types of issues. So we might get four to six officers at a time. And a matter of fact, I think that's what we had last week at both of those particular trainings. So some officers get that particular training and obviously some haven't. And over the course of time, if this instructor comes back in six months, we'll send a few more. That's why we're exploring perhaps some other ways of bringing this instructor even, even back to focus exclusively on Urbana with his areas of expertise. I know that you guys have already had some discussion. I think a couple of weeks back with regards to the ten shared principles. That was something that came out of that particular recommendation. And so I won't necessarily go through all of that again, but I do think it's important to note that we've received some feedback from the, the event late last week. And so some of those comments from the participants, those are the types of things that we can use to move forward with our outreach coordinator, who's also been recently hired, Mr. Lamont Pepper. So those comments from the ten shared principles event, we think will help guide our path forward as we move beyond the current state of affairs. I do want to make a mention as well. I know that Mr. Miller has brought up numerous times. So I wanted to give an update on regard to redacted policies. As I've said, there are one hundred and sixty-three police policies. Twenty-six of those had some level of redaction. We have been able to go through sixteen of those, review those and unredact what had been redacted. So those clean policies have all been posted to the website. And I will quickly run down those just so that every, so that everyone understands. These are the ones that are now back on, that have been uploaded and there are no reductions in those. The number is the policy number just for reference. So very quickly, two oh one, emergency management plan, two oh five, staffing levels, three oh three, controlled devices and techniques, three oh six firearms, three oh seven range, three oh eight vehicle pursuits, three oh nine officer response to calls, three nineteen, public alerts, three thirty-nine interns, volunteers and ride-alongs, three forty, off-duty law enforcement actions, four thirty, mobile field force, five zero four tire deflation devices, six hundred criminal investigations for patrol and CID, six zero nine warrant service, six ten metro operations, planning and deconfliction, and seven zero four respirator protection program. So all of those have been unredacted and, so that leaves ten policies. And those we, we'll, we continue to move forward and schedule and deal with those folks who help do that kind of work. So I wanted to mention that with regards to policies. And while I'm on policies, I will politely turn it over to Carol Mitten to discuss the use of force policy rewrite effort.
So before I take that up, I just wanted to make note of the fact that in moving forward with the, the policy review and removing the reductions, the, the, the ones that are left are, are a little bit more challenging. And so Bryant has to convene a group that includes people that work on FOIA on a daily basis. And as you will find next week when we bring the budget amendment, we are, we are struggling to keep up with the, the FOIA demand. And we, we will be bringing additional help onboard through a contractor to help us keep up with the workload. So that, that is slowing down this policy review because it's the same people in, in many cases that are doing it. So just an understanding on the, the staffing challenges there and, and how we will be needing to add resources to deal with it. So to the, to the use of force policy rewrite, which was, you know, that was a big piece of the, of what came out of the Hillard Hines review. And I had reported to you what our, what our game plan was in terms of undertaking that review. And when I presented that, I got some feedback particularly from Julie Lautt that, you know, it would be nice to, to have some listening sessions. And it would also be nice to have something that's targeted towards youth participation. So we've taken some extra time and with Lamont Pepper's help and, and he will, he will be the moderator for our listening sessions. We have those listening sessions scheduled and I can announce the times tonight, although we'll be pushing out the actual announcements in a, in a little, in a little while. We're, we're not quite there yet. But the, the sessions are going to be on November twelfth and thirteenth. So the youth session will be November twelfth from one thirty to three thirty. And anyone is welcome to attend. It'll be a Zoom session like a city council meeting, but we're really looking for the youth voices at that, at that session. And then later that evening from five thirty to seven thirty, we'll have a more open session for people that want to participate. And then the following day, which is a Friday, the thirteenth of November, from three to five. And the goal will be a little bit more focused than what they're doing in Champaign since we have a very specific task ahead of us. It's not that people can't talk about what, whatever they would like to, but we're specifically seeking people's, people's reactions, people's, you know, offering different language or whatever in, in those listening sessions. And, and as I mentioned, Lamont will be the moderator. We're going to push this out to, you know, on, you know, email and to, you know, a contacts list that we have. But Lamont is also going to make a special effort to go out into the community and, you know, and talk to people one-on-one that we might not normally reach through our, through the, the methods that we use, social media and email lists and the like. And our goal is, you know, if somebody has any kind of challenges with access to the internet, we will deal with those on an individual basis. And if people want to attend, we'll figure out how to do that. So there'll be more on that coming forward. But I'm, I'm really glad that Julie mentioned that. I think that'll be, I think that'll be an important piece for us to include. So happy between Bryant and I to answer any questions about all that.
Any questions? Mary Alice.
So Carol, I, I wrote down November twelfth and November thirteenth as the two times that you're thinking about having listening sessions. Both of those are during the day on a weekday. Is there a thought as to why there isn't one in the evening?
Well, the one, there's one in the evening, which is five thirty to seven thirty on the twelfth.
Oh, so there's three?
Yeah, there's three. There's.
All right. I, I missed one.
Yeah, there's two on the twelve.
Okay. All right. There's two on the twelve. Okay. Thank you.
And, and I'll also say that because there's challenges with everything is we're finding ourselves running out of time. You know, Jason is not allowed to get sick in, in any way because, you know, we're just, we're just booking up the, the Zoom slots. If you want it to be this kind of public interaction. And it's, it's just really challenging. We're just short on opportunities and time slots and so forth.
Thank you. Jared?
So the remaining ten chief, we're still looking at those, right? Is that what I heard from that? Or those have been looked at and are decidedly remaining redacted?
We're still looking at those.
Okay. Gotcha. Um. And then, so we only have ten out of the entire total that are, that have any redactions now, right? Correct?
That, that's correct. So of the one hundred and sixty-three, one hundred and fifty-three should be clear and open. So.
I, I opened up some of them as you were listing them off and didn't see anything in, in there at least. I don't know how did the redactions appear, but I guess I could look at it in formance. Okay. It's very obvious. They're blacked out.
Yes.
So I didn't see any in those. So it looks like they've been, they've been uploaded and updated as such. With regard to use of force, getting the public input and all of that stuff. And, you know, we've, I feel like I know, but just want to get clarification from you guys. You know, it's not in the usual business of the council to set Urbana Police Department policy. That's what we pay you to do, chief, more or less amongst your leadership. So I'm curious though, because use of force is such a public and is being given particular public consideration. Not that we're necessarily going to, I don't know, make a vote on it or decide on it, but is it, or is it going to be presented before its final institution as a changed policy to council at some point to get council input on it prior to when it goes, in case there's other things to consider?
The, the plan that I had laid out, and I, and I think this is still the plan, is that at this point, we're going to take in just raw feedback, right? We have a policy out there. We want, we want people's feedback in whatever form they would like to communicate to us. And then we would push out a draft that would be reflective of as much of that feedback as, as, as makes sense, given all the puts and takes that, that are involved. And then people would have an opportunity to comment on the draft new policy. And then we would get that second round of feedback. And then the chief and the mayor would finalize the policy. And, and as you mentioned, this would not be put to a vote of the council. But, you know, because of the level of concern and about, about the policy and, and we want to hear from the public and, and be as responsive as, as we can be. That's why we're, that's why we're going, taking these extra steps in this, in this instance.
So it sounded like we're not going to see it before it becomes a thing to have discussion about it? Is that what I heard?
I, I, if I said, I didn't mean to say that. What, what I meant to say is a draft, if you're looking for a special role for the council before it goes to the public, I, I don't know how that would work. But it would be once we take all this feedback and work up a draft policy, that will be presented. The forum could be a council meeting. It could be, it could be just a public forum. We haven't thought that through, but that would be another opportunity for the public and the council to see the draft and give us additional feedback prior to its final adoption.
Okay. Just, just trying to understand if we needed to do that in some other format or if we were going to have the opportunity to discuss that at a meeting because it's probably involved enough that it needs an actual council meeting for everybody to talk about it.
That, yeah, that'd probably be the most straightforward thing.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. And it occurred to me, I, while the council, most of the council members have met Lamont Peppers individually, we haven't introduced him to the public. So I'll, hopefully we can bring him to the council meeting next week and introduce him to the public. New business is an appointment to the Sustainability Advisory Commission. And I'm pleased to submit Jessica Lemke, who will have a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. She's a resident of Urbana and she serves as the dean of students at Edison Middle School in Champaign. in Champaign. She believes Urbana can be a model environmentally sustainable community, looks forward to helping create a stronger, healthier and more beautiful Urbana. And I believe she will also bring good perspective from the youth in 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 our community, well, in Champaign, but the youth perspective on things. So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the appointment.
I'll second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll? Brown.
Yes.
Colbrook.
Yes.
Keller.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes.
That motion passes. And last item on the agenda is a discussion item, and that is the Urbana Landmark Hotel Extension of the Redevelopment Project, moving the start date to July 1st, 2021. And this is a discussion item, and I just let the public know, we have scheduled a special city council meeting for next week to consider the ordinance that would actually approve that extension. So this is discussion only. Carol, are you, Mary Alice, do you want to extend the meeting?
Yeah, I was just going to ask if we should extend the meeting. Should we extend to 10:45? Is that enough time?
I think so.
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we extend the city council meeting to 10:45.
I'll second it.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Bill Colbrook. Will the clerk please call the roll? Brown.
Yes.
Colbrook.
Yes.
I'm assuming she said me, so yes.
Keller. Robert.
Robert says yes.
Whoa, yes.
That motion passes. Go ahead, Carol.
Okay, thank you. So we had received a request prior to the prior to the deadline that's in the existing agreement from the hotel development team to extend the deadline because of all the issues related to the pandemic that we've been dealing with. And there were a couple of things that we wanted to see prior to making a recommendation to council. So we asked for revised proposals from or revised projections from the development team. And we also wanted to bring in the consultant who advised us on the original deal, Brenda Paytek, to do an analysis of their of their new projections and give us some insights into the hospitality market locally and nationally. And then we also, as 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 time advanced then, and Elizabeth was planning on doing a revised financial forecast, we thought it was really important for people to have that background of the revised forecast in order to make this decision. So you heard from Elizabeth earlier and and we've been doing briefings with y'all, but for the benefit of the public, I would share that the both the revised projections from the developer and also the information that we received from our consultant, Ms. Paytek, suggests that there will be a recovery back to, you know, more, I would say normalized levels in the hotel market in around 2023, which is about the time the hotel would open. I think right now they're projecting maybe late 2022, but that would be, you know, getting to the back on the top of that of that curve of recovery. And and given that, you know, our financial condition in the city looks pretty good right now, based on what Elizabeth shared with you. And we have a pretty, unless something precipitous happens, we have a pretty good line of sight to any changes that would take place that would require us to make adjustments. And given the level of of risk that's been taken on by the developer in the upfront and the upfront part of this deal, which is that we don't, you know, we don't issue the bond until they're ready to open with, you know, with the Hilton Tapestry brand in place, we feel comfortable recommending to council that you extend the the deadline to start the construction until July 1st of 2021. And we have representatives from the hotel development team available, should you have any questions? And that includes Pervase, Ousmane and Sam Spiritoz. So I'm happy to answer questions and and so are they. Thank you.
Any questions? Dennis.
Yeah, well, I'm enthused to know that this hotel agreement is continuing. It seemed like during the COVID pandemic, it would have been a really convenient time to try to do some initial work. And I understand that some of the initial work is really just conceptual at this point. And but I was wondering if they had had an opportunity to walk through the hotel with their designers yet, or is that something that is still going to be coming up down the line from now?
I'm going to let Pervase answer that in just a sec, but I do want to say to be fair to them, during the time that we took with their with their request, which has been months, they haven't put a lot of additional investment into because they didn't know what our answer was going to be. So so we we held things up a bit on our end, but maybe Pervase could respond to your direct question.
Yep, happy to address that. So we were able to go through the property with our, there's a few different teams here working on it. There's the branding team and then there's also the architecture and design team. So the branding team sort of is the initial stage and they're responsible for crafting that branding story for the hotel and they've been able to walk the property and get a feel for it. Now, the architecture and design team, when they come down, they want to do the drawings and they want to do the measurements of the rooms. So they have gotten a chance to get virtual visits of the property. And once we finalized our information with the city, they're going to be coming down for their measurements and drawings.
Great. And I guess the other thing is, I just want to, I want to encourage you to retain as much of the unique quality of the interior as is feasible. I'm not saying so much about the rooms, which need a really nice overhaul, I'm sure, but many of us have very strong feelings about the appearance of the lobby and the library and the great hall, because they're just unique amenities and they were designed originally by a very important local architect. I know that our landmarking doesn't necessarily protect the interior, but I just hope that you are very thoughtful about any changes that you make. I'm certainly looking for some upgrades and modernization.
Yep, we we definitely agree with that. We want to preserve the identity of the property. It's a very unique hotel, so we want to make sure that we're keeping those historic elements intact and making sure that we're keeping the sort of essence of the hotel as it is and upgrading it and bring it to a modern level, but also keeping those cultural and historic aspects to the property that make it what it is.
So thank you very much for that.
Any other questions or comments? Mary Alice.
Um, I just, I want to thank the developers. I know that you have already purchased the property that we live in uncertain times. So I want to thank you for sticking with this project. I also want to thank the staff for, we had advised that maybe this, the best way to bring this up would be a discussion item rather than having it as an approval. So I really appreciate the staff listening and doing that. So the intent then is if the public has any input, we vote on this next Monday. And from where I stand and from everything that I've heard, I think that we're in a good position right now. The city has a good agreement with the developers and developers are happy with the agreement. So at this time, based on the information that I have, I think, I think that we're going to move forward with this, but I do want the public to know that there is still time. If you have any comments, to definitely provide them either in writing to our email address or to come to public participation on next Monday.
One more question.
Sure, Dennis, go ahead.
So, of course, I'm very interested in finding out. I'm just wondering if you, if the city council will have a chance to view the planned draft architectural drawings and maybe offer some comments? I'm really curious, most especially to see how you treat the exterior of the older, the newer Jumer addition, which once is falling apart in general on the outside. Some of the features are, you know, absent now, especially along one wall of the one long wall of the of that wing. So I mean, it's going to change its appearance. I am assuring myself, but I'm just sort of wondering to what degree. I hope that whatever you do is connects it visually and somehow appropriately to the the older central section of the hotel. So.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. As a local landmark, of course, many of the exterior changes would need to be considered by our Historic Preservation Commission. So we can, of course, talk about the details on that and when that'll get scheduled, but there will be a thorough review of the exterior for sure.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Well, I just wanted to thank Sam Spiritoz and Pervase Ousmane for being here. It's late, it's late in Urbana, but it's even later on the East Coast. So thank you, Sam. And I just wanted to thank you both for your commitment to the project and for working with us through this pandemic. And, you know, we all know the hospitality industry has been one of the hardest industries in this pandemic. So I appreciate your willingness to to move ahead. And it, you know, the ribbon cutting on this project is going to be especially meaningful in many, many ways. So thank you. So that's no action taken tonight. Again, the ordinance will be considered at a special meeting of the Urbana City Council next week, which I assume starts at seven o'clock. I haven't looked at had far enough, but I think it's seven o'clock next week. And that'll be the only item on that special council member agenda or special council meeting agenda. With no further business before this meeting, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a good week.